So we are reconvening, actually, our Clayton City Council meeting for Tuesday, June 18, 2019. Let the record reflect that all council members are present. If everyone could please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, our first item is Item 5, which is the Consent Calendar. Does anybody want to pull any items? Have any comments? Or is there a motion?
I would move approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, that passes unanimously. Which then takes us to Recognitions, Item 6. And I'm going to ask Mr. Mizuno to come up. I'm going to take this with me.
(inaudible)
I have my own paper. So, Mr. Mizuno, Kevin Mizuno, has been our Finance Director for a number of years now, and unfortunately is leaving our city. So it's really sad to see you leave, but we wanted to give you this plaque of appreciation. So, and I want to say a couple of words first before we get to that. So I had an opportunity to be on the Budget Subcommittee for the first two years when I was on the council, and really had an opportunity to see you, not only here at the council meetings, but also in that Subcommittee, in your element, to say. And I've always found Kevin to be extremely professional, very prepared, very courteous, and very knowledgeable. So it is truly sad to see you leave, but we want to thank you for the years you've provided to the City of Clayton, and wish you all the best in the future. So with that, we have this plaque here that says, "With sincere appreciation to Kevin Mizuno, Finance Manager for the valued service to the Clayton community from December 2013 to June 2019."
Thank you so much.
Just a bit. Let me get a photo op here. There you go. Camera's going to want it for the paper.
Thank you. So it's hard for me to believe that it's been five and a half years since I made one of the best decisions ever for my career, as well as my family and my personal life, to join my hometown and come back and serve as the Finance Manager for this wonderful town that I love so much. It's, you know, I've had a great opportunity to work on some tremendous projects, which I think helped the city in a lot of ways with efficiency and transparency and improving financial reporting, and had the opportunity to work with a lot of phenomenal staff that are very talented in our small town. And I wanted to take the opportunity to turn it around and say thank you to all of our elected officials, our City Council members, the new ones, as well as the ones that have been here since I joined the team and a lot longer before that. In my opinion, it takes a tremendous amount of courage, drive, and patriotism to become an elected official and be a voice for the city on local, regional, state, and even national bodies, and then come back and more often than not receive punishment for public outcry rather than accolades, which, you know, sometimes is needed to hear the voice and other times, in my opinion, is not deserved. So thank you for being supportive of staff, my department, and all of our projects. And then I wanted to thank Mr. Gary Napper, our City Manager, who has been a tremendous leader and mentor for me over the past five and a half years, overall just being a great family-friendly and good-hearted boss that's taught me a lot. And then I want, lastly, to thank staff and our department heads for all of their commitment to the city and helping me with a number of challenges, with whether it's budget or the audit or operations, and all of your valued input and dedication over the years. Oftentimes, because we're small agency, department heads and staff wear three or more hats, when you go to another agency, you have three or more people that do those different jobs. So they have to kind of do a balancing act, and as a lot of people in this room know, which we emphasize during the budget approval process every year, that we're a low property tax city, and we only receive about 6.9 or 8 cents of every ad valorem dollar that you pay in property taxes. But nonetheless, when people, including myself, before I became educated on this process, would come to City Hall and want answers, whether it pertains to a special district responsibility, or a county, or a state, or especially school district, but rather than saying, you know, "That's someone else's problem, go talk to them," our great staff, especially our Ms. Laura Hoffmeister, who we call internally "The Lurical," is great at digging up and looking for answers and responding to the public and trying to provide the best service that you can. So thank you all for everything and all of your efforts, and the public for teaching me in this whole process, and the transparency, and then everything that goes with that. And rather than reflect on my five and a half years and be disheartened or saddened that we are parting now, I read somewhere that when saying farewell, it's not appropriate to be sad if you're never, it's only appropriate to be sad if you're never going to say hello again. And I'm raising a family right down the street, on the border. I've been here for my whole life, and I plan to stay around, so I'm definitely going to be saying hello more often to everybody. So thank you so much for everyone, for everything.
Five and a half years. Five and a half years and what, eight children in that time? Congratulations on the new baby.
Yeah.
And wear that Clayton pin every day in Oakley.
Yeah, I want to say that I, this is my second tour of duty on the Finance Subcommittee, and I remember when Kevin joined the city staff and really brought a higher level of professionalism to that department, and ever since then, we've been on a very steady and excellent pace to keep our finances in order and maintaining a sound financial budget and other matters. Thanks, Kevin.
Vice Mayor Pierce?
Yeah, I just want to say thank you, Kevin. You know, Jim's absolutely right. Your professionalism and expertise has added so much. You know, Gary's a wizard with budgets, but it really needs somebody who can run the numbers and do the hard work and keep it going and all of that, and it just has been a breath of fresh air having you in that corner of the third floor. And I have to say, I am sad to see you go, but I'm actually honored that you stayed as long as you did, and that you took your time to spend with us, and that you asked your future employer to give us a little more time and get us through the budget before you took off. That helps tremendously, and we know you won't be far away. You're going to work for another, for a special district here in Contra Costa, so you'll be right close to home, and we look forward to seeing you at the concerts with all three of those kiddos in tow very soon. So best of luck to you. We're proud to have had you here this long.
Councilwoman Juan?
I just wanted to also reiterate, in the short time that I've been part of the Budget Subcommittee, working together on the budget, I think your level of professionalism, as well as acumen that you bring is, well, we speak the same language, so it's very helpful. And so, in that regard, I just want to say thank you and good luck.
Great. Thank you very much, Kevin, again.
If I may, Mayor, Council, just on behalf of staff, I do want to publicly thank Kevin for all of his outstanding work in our community here. I've worked with five finance managers here in the City of Clayton during my tenure in the City of Clayton, and Kevin is by far top, head and shoulders, top of everybody that we've ever had here. Also knowing finance managers from other communities, we've been very blessed to have him in our community. He's really managed to be able to organize all of the finances, getting new computer programs up and running, getting them established, getting everything, I think, in line for the next person to come in to have a much easier task at moving forward. But I will want to also thank Kevin for his efforts in this city. Under his leadership, we were able to obtain, or he was able to obtain, because it was his work in the budget process, of getting award recognitions for the city's budgets and the CAFERS, the consolidated annual financial reports and the city's annual budget. And we hadn't had those before in this community, so he took the extra effort to put those together, to submit those, and put them through the scrutiny, and was rewarded by receiving outstanding recognition for those reports. So he set the bar very, very high for the next person that comes in to fill his shoes, and we hope that he's been able to keep all of those foundation blocks in place that we will continue to grow with in the community. So thank you, Kevin, on behalf of the city and city staff for your work and your service in our community. And we wish you luck over at Central Sands. And I know Councilmember Juan was interested in how does Central Sands numbers really work? Well, we have an inside line, so maybe, maybe give them a little bit of time, and we might find out the, a little bit more information, but we wish you well.
Great. And if you ever want to change your mind, we're right down here. Great, thank you. So then we'll move on to Item 6B, which is another presentation. We have a presentation from PG&E regarding its new Public Safety Power Shut-Off Program that's going to be employed during fire hazard conditions. I believe we have Tom Guarino.
Actually, I'm not Tom, but Vic Baker's going to do the honors tonight.
Perfect. Great, go ahead.
Thank you. And I'm not as good as Tom, but I'm going to do my best tonight. Vic Baker, on behalf of Tom Guarino, I'm PG&E. Thank you for allowing us to be here. Today, we're going to...
Can you just pull the microphone up a little bit? Just kind of follow everyone in.
Well, thank you. I appreciate it.
And you brought your assistant with you today, too?
Yes, that's my bodyguard, not my assistant.
Future senator.
Yes, indeed. He's taking public speaking right now at DVC, so we'll have him up here in no time. But thank you for having us. I'm going to go quickly through the Community Wildlife Safety Program. It's going to focus on what we're doing from PG&E's perspective with regards to wildfire safety, not only in our region, but right here in Clayton, and we're going to speak specifically about it. Just to start off, we have three main tenants that we're going to focus on today. Real-time monitoring intelligence really focuses on the technology piece and intelligence gathering, and it really is centered around our Wildfire Safety Operations Center that is going to be in San Francisco, stated our 24/7 operation, and is manned by the top of the top when it comes to weatherization, weather forecasting, modeling, our electric specialists. It's going to be monitored 24/7. So it's a wonderful operations center. We've already started to use it. We had an event last week, and I'll talk a little bit about that event a couple of weeks ago, I'm sorry. If you have any questions, I'm more than happy to answer that. Of course, expanding our weather stations and our high-def cameras to see real-time what's going on in the field. Our new enhanced safety measures, we start, number one, with vegetation. So we've enhanced our vegetation safety measures, the minimums requirements, and we'll talk a little bit about that, as well as what we want to do and what we've been allowed to do, given permission by our customers. But also, one of the most important ones, the two most important ones, is disabling some of our reclosures, which automatically connects our system in case there's a trip. We had automatically, our system was automatically reclosing, and we've enabled those or disabled those so that we have to go out there manually and turn them back on. But the most popular one, I think you've guys all heard about this, is our Public Safety Power Shut-Off. If you haven't heard, that's when conditions are at a certain point. We'll talk about what those conditions are, those variables, and we will actively, proactively shut off power to prevent or minimize the chance of a fire, a wildfire. And of course, a system hardening. What can we do to be more resilient? What can we do to minimize the impacts? And of course, that's targeted undergrounding where we can in certain areas, but also hardening. How about we use something other than wood poles? How about we use composite poles? And so we're being very innovative in how we move forward with the, yeah, how we move forward in the company. And of course, working with our communities during those Public Safety Power Shut-Off and offering resources. What can we do to set up resources in the local community? Those communities are going to be affected. What's important to understand is today, when it comes to Public Safety Power Shut-Off, is different than a year ago, is it's going to affect everyone in our system. A year ago, we were focused on a distribution system, so we were able to get just small pockets of areas. Now, it's at our transmission level. And I like to say, our big wires, our big wires feed our little wires. So if we turn off a big wire, that means the little wires turn off as well. All right? So this is Clayton, and this is a map published by the California Public Utilities Commission. This is not a PG&E map. This is something we use statewide with other utilities, such as Edison and Sandyogas and Electric, and it identifies Tier 2, Tier 3, and Tier 1. Tier 2 and Tier 3 being elevated in extreme areas. You guys here in Clayton are Tier 2. Okay? With small, right on the border, you can see right on the border of Tier 3, extreme areas. So that should be good information. You should be clapping. It's good to be in Tier 2. But what that also says is, with respect to being in Tier 2, our protocol with doing Public Safety Power Shuts-Off are going to be a little bit different than what we do with extreme areas. So when we have to make a decision with regards to turning off your power, that plays a big difference in how we do it and how we choose those communities. So real-time monitoring and intelligence. This is the operations center that I was telling you about, 24/7 operation, but also, how about we're installing 1,300 weather stations by 2022, all around our system? That's a huge push, and that data is available real-time. You can go to that website at utah.edu and find our real data at any given time. That's more intelligence, more information that we use to make decisions on how we're going to operate. But also, 600 high-def cameras by 2022. We get to see real-time what are the conditions when we see the weather state, the weather information comes in. We can turn on a camera, turn on a TV, and actually look and see what's happening out there in real-time. So that's important, and that is monitored 24 hours a day, seven days a week. Vegetation, we're enhancing our standard vegetation. There where it says four feet, everyone sees the four feet with the circle, that used to be 18 inches. We used to have 18 inches was the standard cut and trim trees around, so you used to have, if it was 18 above and 18 below, we satisfied those conditions as a minimum. We raised that to a minimum four feet around our conductors. In addition to the four feet, now we're going not just four feet around, we're making sure that nothing lives on top of those lines at all. So we're going four feet to the sky at minimum. What we like to do, and what we've been very successful in communities such as Martinez, Briones, Pleasant Hill, the La Merinda Corridor, is working with our customers to try to get 12 feet. Let's get 12 feet outside our conductors. So when we come back in a year on our annual basis to do our routine maintenance, that tree hasn't grown back closer to our conductors. So if we can get 12 feet, it allows for growth, and it still will be outside the minimum. Wildfire inspections. We launched in late 2018 an inspection program to inspect every line, every tower, every pole, every inch of our electric utility line above ground. Today, you're going to see this tomorrow in the news and the publication, we're over 90% complete. The remaining 10% is what we call CGI's, can't-get-ins, so properties where we have in trouble getting in and getting access to. And so we, that does take a little bit longer to finish. But with that said, we've done a tremendous job. Our teams have been out there, and we use a combination of visual inspection, aerial inspection using drones, as well as helicopter inspection. It's a combination of, one is not more important than the other. We use them interchangeably. So for instance, if we fly a drone, drone picks up something, we may still send somebody up there to take a look at it, or fly a helicopter to get some infrared stress tests. So we use them all. Very successful in doing that. Our maintenance and repair. So of course, if we're going to inspect, we've got to do the repairs. So we actively, in this area, we're pretty active in the Diablo Division as well as North Valley, because of course, that's the high danger area, but particularly active in fixing any of those A tags, what we call them, those high-impact tags, in order that we get from the inspection. System hardening resiliency, 7,000 miles of highest fire-risk areas, we're in there. We're installing stronger, more resilient poles. Again, it's not just wood poles, it could be composite poles. We are, on the transmission side, we are working with the, with our towers and making sure that every knuckle, every piece of equipment is up to cold, and ensuring that we're not going to have any accidents this year, or moving forward, how about that? And of course, our new resiliency zones, giving a place, setting up a place when we do a PSPS events, and it does affect somebody like Clayton, what can we do to offer some support? A place where we can have a generator, PG&E has set up a generator, and a tent in a parking lot where people can come and charge their phones and maybe get some water. It's not a place for overnight, it's not a, it's not an emergency evacuation center, but it is something that we can offer our customers, knowing that they're going to be affected by this. Additional safety measures, I touched a bit about the reclosures. 450 of those devices, we made remote now, so, which is great, because before, they, we weren't able to turn them back off when they were, when, they weren't remote, they didn't have SCADA on them.
Can you explain to everyone, because you're being televised now.
Okay, not a problem.
Can you really explain what a recloser is? Because when I learned about it during the fires a couple of years ago, I was very surprised, and I had no idea what they were or how they work. So if you'd explain how they work, that would help everyone to understand what's going on.
In my most elementary explanation, I'll do my best. So we have power running through lines when, just like it runs through your house. If a circuit trips, something trips your circuit...
Speak into the mic, though.
I'm sorry. Something trips your circuit, it will turn off the electricity to that line. Well, our would trip, but because it was automatic, when it felt that it was ready to go again, it would automatically turn back on. So we wouldn't have to send anybody out there to turn it on if it was in an obscure area, it would just turn on by itself. Now, we can, we've enabled them and put SCADA on them, so we can actually turn them off and keep them off remotely. So they're not turning on automatically. Hopefully that helped. Did that help?
It lessens the danger of a fire.
Yes, it does. So no longer is electricity running through the line automatically. So if a tree was on the line and it had a chance to turn back on, it would not turn back on because we didn't tell it to turn it on. See here. You want to talk about this one?
No.
Okay.
Tom's going to make you do it all, Vic.
No secrets.
I told him, only speak to the electric officials. I was trying to behave. Yes, I will only speak to the electric officials. Okay. PSPS, let's talk about that for, just briefly, because the question has come up over and over again, how do you determine it? How do you determine a PSPS event? What's the formula? And as a recovering engineer that I am, I want to understand what the exact formula is. Well, it's not algebra, it's not geometry, it's more like differential equations. The variable is going to be dependent, and it's a moving variable. And so at any given time, any of these conditions, together, combined, can potentially give us the indication that we're going to turn off power or not. But not one in particularly, there is no one number that's going to set it apart, but red flag warnings, number one, from the National Weather Service, our humidity levels are going to matter. That's the purpose of us having more and more weather stations. And of course, the winds, the winds are a primary piece of this puzzle. How strong are the winds? I live in Bay Point, and I think they say it's the windiest city in California. All right? And so that matters. And of course, the conditions of the dry fuel, which for us is two measures. One is the visual, that's why we're putting cameras out there, so we can see, but also getting people out there on the ground and actually seeing it themselves in real time, so getting our people out there to look at it. All those are conditions that could potentially trip and allow us to call a PSPS event. Talk a little bit about the fire-threat area. This is, again, a CPUC fire, this is not a PG&E map, this is a CPUC map that we all utilize.
Before you left that, I noticed on two of your slides, you mentioned Tier 2 and Tier 3.
Yes.
Does Tier 1 mean that's a normal situation?
Not normal, it's just not elevated or extreme. Yes.
Okay. But just out of curiosity, your presentation is silent on what Tier 1 is. I don't see anything in there that defines that.
So, and I don't have anything to strictly define it, but I will say...
It's obviously something above normal, then, right?
Yes, it is.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. So what happens in a PSPS? How do you get notified in a PSPS event? We do our best to notify you 48 hours, and we use three, several measures. We try to get your phone calls, and, and, it's not or, is and, and emails, whatever channel you sign up for on our website, whatever channel you sign up for as a part of PG&E, we want to communicate to you that way. So it could be a phone call to your landline and try to leave a voicemail, it could be a text message to your mobile phone, it could be an email, it could be all of the above. In addition, we're doing our, we're working with the cities to try to make sure communication goes out on your websites, on your NEXL, on your next door. And so our media department is really working hard to make those connections and make sure that you guys know, so you can help us be successful in communicating this out. So you're going to get a 48-hour, where possible, you're going to get a 24-hour, where possible, and of course, just before. And you're going to get updates as well during the Public Safety outage, likely to your cell phones, likely to something that you can monitor, maybe an email address on your phone, and then once power has been restored, you're going to get another notification. So we just had one in North Valley a couple of weeks ago. It went off pretty well. We went to bed on Thursday, woke up on Friday with a PSPS event in activation. We opened up a Community Resource Center in Orville, and we had people come in and charge their phones. We had people come in and drink water. And the communication aspect, from what I understand, went pretty smooth, a lot better than it did last year.
And if I may comment on that power failure, I got immediate call within the first five minutes of the outage. Three pieces of information. One, there is an outage, the number of homes that are affected are individuals, and three, the estimated return to power.
So something separate, Councilman Diaz, that wasn't a PSPS event. That was a regular outage. That is what we do on a regular outage any given day. So we, last week, we had an entire bank at Rossmore Substation go out, and it affected upwards of 15,000 of our customers. So it was a big outage. But yes, regular day-to-day, you're going to get those notifications, so thank you.
Excellent.
I think the confusion was you used the word "North Valley." We have a North Valley area, not too far from Councilmember Diaz's home, and I think you're referring up, further up in Northern California.
Northern California Valley, yes. And I don't know how to distinguish the two here, but that's what I meant, North Valley, Northern California Valley. Thank you.
We also have the North Meridian that runs right through town, and your high-tension wires are on that North Meridian. So a lot of us think of those as the North Meridian power lines, too, so...
Understood. I'll make sure...
Lot of norths around here.
Lot of norths. So power goes out. What I try to educate is, when does it come back on? And when can we go, when do we have to end this PSPS event? So when weather clears up, doesn't mean that power goes on immediately. We see the sun come out, and the weather, the wind has died down, there's no, there's no immediate danger. We have to ensure that we inspect every inch of the line. We need to make sure that there are no trees that have fallen on our line. We need to, and we're going to do this physically, we're going to drive and walk this, every inch of that line to ensure that we inspect it, and it's good enough for us to turn back on. In that case, that means that we could possibly be out of power for 24, 48 hours, it could even be a week, depending on if it's a transmission line. Means we got to terrain, we got to get that terrain and actually look at those wires at the transmission level. So it's, you know, I urge, we want to work with you to ensure that we prepare our customers for these events.
Haven't you just recently completed a major project of replacing the high-power lines? Because we could see the helicopters putting, dropping these gentlemen up on the top of the tower up there.
That was two years ago, yes.
Yeah, right.
We just did one from Antioch to Maraga.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was a great project, loved it. I was here, speaking in front of you guys around that project. That was the last time I was here. But yes, once we restore power, we're going to notify you that everything's ready to go, that we're back up and running. And working with our customers to prepare. Of course, communication is key. We've reached out to all 5 million of our customers. We've reached out to all five million of our customers because this year, it's everyone who can be affected. Last year, it was those people in high fire threat areas only. It was distribution only. Now, because it's transmission, our transmission line here feeds Oakland, that runs from, a gateway, can feed Oakland. So we have to ensure that, that all of us are prepared. And these are certain ways that we can do it, of course, communication, we've sent mailings out. Everyone should have had notice by now, that P S P S event is not a, a new thing and that everyone should be, should be affected by it. Okay, I think I'm at the end of slides. And what's great about me giving this presentation is that I can give the presentation and you guys send all your questions to Tom Guarino. Thank you for your time.
Well, I'm not going to let you go quite yet. I have a feeling that our colleagues have questions too. So, a couple of questions from me.
Yes.
So, you talked a little bit about placing some of the wires that are above ground, underground?
Mm-hmm.
So how extends, I assume it's not cheap, but how much is PG&E doing that?
Well, right now, the only agreement that we've established is the area that, that the campfire that we hit last year, we made an agreement that we're going to, as part of the replacement area, that we're going to put those underground. But wherever we can, I mean, we, we also still have our, our Rule Twenty, Rule Twenty opportunities for, Rule Twenty-A, where we can always underground with the help of the cities and the, and the communities. So there's always money there that we can partner with and do that. But for the most part, we really want to, want to concentrate on those high fire threat areas at this moment.
Is, is that, I assume, expensive process though, undergrounding?
Yes, expensive on both ends. One, to do it, well, let me back up. Depends on when you do it. If you have a brand-new development and the ground is raw or bare, then it's probably as expensive. But if you're, if you're going to take above ground and put them underground, yes, of course, that's expensive. And then the maintenance piece of it is going to be expensive as well.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then, you mentioned that you now have sort of these increased radius on the poles, you know, four feet, twelve feet. So, and it sounds like you've inspected ninety percent of the lines to kind of provide for that radius. So how often do you go back to re-inspect them?
So, it's on an annual basis, transmission is a little bit different than distribution, but we have a regular annual maintenance protocol. I can't speak to the specifics of it, how often we go, but it also depends on the size of the wire, how much usage is, how much usage, there's several variables. But it's on a regular ma, scheduled maintenance.
Okay.
All of our, all of our lines.
And if members of the public might notice that they, they realize some of the trees or whatnot have grown closer than the radius.
Please call us. Call PG&E five thousand, call us please, we'll, we have one of the greatest vegetation management supervisors right here in Diablo Division, we get out there immediately. I think we have five vendors right here in this Diablo Division, Diablo is Contra Costa County, everyone, who, ready to go at any given time.
Okay. And then one last question, so regarding the power shut-off, so, and I don't quite understand it, so maybe you can help me a little bit, but I understand that if there is a power shut-off by PG&E, it does also impact our water supply, potentially?
Any place with electricity, yes.
So, when electricity's out, water's out too?
Unless they have a backup system.
Okay.
Yeah, unless they have a backup generator. Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
Part of, part of the water, it's, it's because it has to pump up, isn't that right? I mean, that's why, that's why.
So your whales, yes.
Pardon me?
Your whales? Is that what you're referring to?
No, that, that the generator has to, the public water supply, doesn't it have to pump up and then so that gravity takes it down? So is that why the water supply is, is affected?
Don't have an answer to that, I'm not sure exactly how it's affected, but I do understand that they use electricity to move the water.
Right, that's what I mean, they're moving it, basically they're pumping it up so it can, gravity can take it down. But anyway, you mentioned the system hardening and resiliency.
Mm-hmm.
What's the timeline on getting that done?
It's ongoing, that is new innovations. So we're, we're looking at, and we're benchmarking with other utilities around the country, how are they doing it? What's happening? What are they doing in places of hurricane, in hurricane areas and, and, those other areas that experience natural disasters quite a bit and high winds? How are they doing it?
I see, so they're probably spending more time right now physically, actually putting in, you talked about all the weather stations and the things that you're doing, that seems like the, the easier thing to do. Certainly, you're spending money on that. How is all this, how is all this funded?
I don't have an answer to that.
Tom, you want to jump up and, or, or the assistant buddy guard want to take that?
Ah goodness. So it's, some of it is funded by shareholders, most of it's funded from our regular rate base. And so, we will, there will, we will be seeking an increase in rates to pay for some of this for, when it comes to, especially wildfire-related programs. The, so that's, that's going through the, it's being negotiated right now, probably for the next twelve months with the P U C who sets, sets the rates and everything's itemized. I think the answer to your previous question about the hardening and resiliency is, it is ongoing. Whenever we might, if we have a failed pole, and Ms. Hopmatters will get about pointing those out to me, but whether it's here or Concord, but when those fail, we will replace it with a newer technology. But we're looking at maybe a ten-year timeframe to have that, have that whole transformation occur, so.
Okay. And just a couple more things. The, let me see, the, so we got the timeline, okay, so that's, that's going to take a while. What, what can we do as a city now to mitigate our, the possibility of this happening to us, number one? And number two, how many recent or whatever tier-two areas have been affected like, like this? Since we're a tier-two area, what's an example of one and how long did it last? Or has that not happened yet?
Are you referring to the public safety power shut-off?
Yes, yes, of course.
Yeah, like Vic mentioned, just a little bit north here in, in.
The other North Valley.
Yeah.
Orville.
Little north of Solano County, Napa, there were sixteen hundred customers. And in that particular case, we gave them about thirty-six hours' notice, but it lasted about, in that case, it was twelve to twenty-four hours. So, we were able to restore things rather quick. The other, answer to the other question, I think it came up a little earlier either from the mayor or the vice mayor, but if citizens see, and they're, they're much, citizens we just find are much more vigilant, I know I get constant emails and calls where people see vegetation that's impacting the voltage line, which is, you know, really serious. And I should point out that the, the PG&E electrical lines are the ones highest from the ground, the ones a little bit closer to the ground are communication lines. So, there's sometimes a little confusion and our colleagues in the communication companies have a different policy, they don't trim, you know, they, they really just essentially wait for the vegetation to take down a line and then they'll replace, they'll respond at that time. Ours has to be a little more proactive and, so we're out there and if people see that, call us, I don't mind them, calling's probably not a good idea, calling me, but, because my, it, mailbox fills up too quick. But they can email me and I get a lot of emails from people and I, as Vic mentioned, we can pass it along to our, that department that's really good and very responsive, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Ms. Mayor?
Yeah, I actually had one. When you do have a power shut-off, particularly if it's going to be on a weekend like we just had where it was really, really hot, it was also really windy, people are not going to have air conditioning at home, do you set up generators at a place like maybe Hoyer Hall where you can actually run the air conditioning and have a cooling center? Or are they stuck without any place cool to go for ten miles around? Or do you actually include notice of where there might be a cooling center?
So, I'm glad you asked, because I, I think we're, I'm sorry, I'm glad you asked. We, we opened our very first resource center, the, at the Orville in response to the, the last P S P S event. So this is a new pilot that we've established, so it's brand-new. So in response, of course, not an emergency evacuation center, but a place that we can work together on. We've identified places all throughout Contra Costa County. We met with the county last week, county emergency response team last Friday to talk about these sites. And we're going to go to each city, so I'm, I'm making an effort to come to Clayton, I'm making an effort to go to Walnut Creek and Pittsburgh to talk about areas where we could set up, set up a tent, a thirty-by-sixty tent, a hundred people in and out. And we would be offering, hopefully it'd be air-conditioned, but, you know, likely to be outside, but if there's a place we can do it inside, we'll find an opportunity to bring some generation in. But it's not a place for people to hang out, it's not a place for people to, 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 to come and live, it is really an in-and-out to get some reprieve.
I understand. So, what do you do about folks who are fragile in the heat? I mean, if there's no air conditioning for three days like we had last weekend, you're going to have some people who are going to be ill, very ill.
Yes.
And is there something that you can recommend for them? Or is there a process of notifying, okay, here's the area where the power is shut off, but Pleasant Hill still has power, you can go to the library and get cool there, or something like that? Have you thought that far?
So what we, what we have said, I think, what we want to do is have people prep now, before we have an event. This is an opportunity for us to do a collective partnering and say, hey, let's, let's, let's work together, let's ensure that people are prepared in case this happens. We don't want it to be a surprise and people not be prepared. So, no different than we're preparing for earthquakes, no different preparing for any natural disaster, we have to prepare for it that way. But to expect PG&E to be the emergency response and, in response to that, that's not our, that's not our place. So our place is, what can we do ahead of time to prepare for?
You mentioned that you were working with Contra Costa County to designate certain resiliency zones.
Mm-hmm.
I'm assuming that hasn't happened yet for our city?
No, I haven't met with Clayton yet.
Is there a timeline on that?
Yes, in the next two weeks. I have, we have to get them done. My goal is to get them done before the end of the month.
All right.
At least identified, maybe not contracted, but at least identified.
Sure. You, you had mentioned that, that you had been working with other cities to help facilitate some of the tree maintenance. What can, what type of action from the city would help facilitate that in, in our town?
Help us with making sure we expedite permits, that's, that's one big key. So we're, we're in and out, we're in Clayton already, we've actually done quite a bit of work here in Clayton already. But one of the hindrances we have is how long it takes to get those, get those permits through. So that always, that's a big help, if we can get permits to get out there and do some trimming. Help educate our public because of the can't-get-ins, when we have residents don't allow us to get into their facilities or make it very difficult for us to get in their facilities, that's a hindrance. You know, just educate really, and I can provide any information you need to help distribute to your, to your residents regarding this piece, regarding vegetation.
Why would anybody keep you from getting in?
You know, administrative law judge asked that question too during bankruptcy, but you can, but it happens, okay? You, you, yes, all the time. People love trees. They love their trees. And it doesn't matter if they're going to take out their entire neighborhood because that branch is hanging right above that line, they don't care.
I think, thank you very much. This was very informative. Okay, Councilmember Diaz.
The question, at what, at one time, we were invited over to that facility on Detroit that had this state-of-the-art mon, is that the operations center that you were talking about?
No, no, that is.
So it's separate from this?
I'm sorry, no, that's not the operations center, that's not the wildfire operations center, that's a separate center.
But that one is monitoring the power throughout the region, right? That center?
Absolutely.
Okay.
That's our control center.
Gotcha.
Yes. Don't mention it, it's top secret.
I know, it's well-hidden.
If I may, Mayor, I have one question that was slightly touched on, but I don't think it would be helpful if you had maybe more of an answer, if not, you can get back to us.
Okay.
Are you planning to meet or have you met with Contra Costa Water District who provides the water for our community? As was mentioned, we have water reservoirs that are up in the hills that gravity feed down to our community, including the fire hydrants. And obviously, at a certain point, those, the water would be depleted to where they can't pump again. But what interconnection or what communication have you had with Contra Costa Water District on your power shut-off plan as it relates to their operations? Has that meeting happened or those discussions happened or are they going to happen?
Absolutely, there's not, there's not a utility that didn't get notice, not a utility that hadn't had the information. We called them all and talked to them all with regards to this, this P S P S event. This is not new, this is only new to us. SDG&E has been doing this for about six years, seven years, almost ten years now. It's just new to us. But yes, we've already reached out at a customer base and we've made that communication very well-known.
If, if I may comment, I want to mention Tom in particular, I know that when the Morgan Fire took place, Tom and the PG&E staff were out there regularly communicating with the residents on the status of how things were getting restored. And in fact, I know you did, I believe you did cut the power off the, you know, so that there would not be a further spreading of a fire. So that was an actual, you know, experience that we, we were able to see firsthand.
Well, I'm glad you brought that up, Councilman, Councilmember Diaz. That fire, we were told to cut off fire by Confire at that time. So that's a, that's a whole separate issue again, different than the wildfire. Confire or Calfire, whoever wish, will send the notice down and say, PG&E, cut off the air, cut off this fire, or cut off this electricity in this area because they need to fight fires.
Precisely, yeah.
Great.
Yeah, real quick, and I were running, running over and to Laura's point too, we have staff that has met with all of the water districts and that, that's their assigned account, just for that very same reason. And I did want to mention, we also have points of contact in, I have thirty-three cities that I'm responsible for, and we have points of contact now in each city. And I think Mr. Napper had selected the police chief as one of the points of contact and maybe the fire representative from the fire department too, but, so we, we've made that and they're on speed dial, just, just when it's time to get out there and do the necessary implementation, so.
Great, thank you very much. This was very informative and definitely keep us informed if there's anything we can do to provide information to our residents and if you want to come again, we'd be happy to have you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So that puts us into item number seven, which is reports. We don't have a planning commission or Trails and Landscaping Committee report, do we have any report from the city manager? None, so we'll move on to city council. Councilmember Diaz, would you like to start? Jim?
Oh, you want me to start?
Sorry.
I thought Laura was going to give us some pearls of wisdom. We had a concert on the eighth of June, featured mixed notes, very entertaining, and we had a good turnout and raised a good amount of money. Had our first car show on the twelfth. On the thirteenth, was up in Sacramento for the League of California Cities meeting, which was for, in the committee that I am a member, is the Environmental Policy Committee, which there were some things that they were working on to make sure that we have purified water, that's very topical right now. And, but the meeting starts off with a presentation from the state-level perspective and we got an overview of the fact that the state budget had a surplus of about twenty million dollars, I think, was the number, maybe twenty billion, I, I know it was significant. And then the, the good governor's going to find a way to spend that on the worthwhile Yesterday, got interviewed by the team that's going to help do the recruitment for the city managers, spent a good amount of time on the phone with that individual to give my perspective on what was coming up and what was going to be needed. And then I know that all of the councilmembers are going to be contacted as well. Lastly, we have a concert this Saturday night with the Boys of Summer, come on out.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Wolf?
Okay, I attended the mayor's conference in Maraga, was very interesting. And then also had the concert in the Grove where I did some fundraising, although Julie has taken the crown back for the week, beat me by a bit, and so we'll have to get it on again here, come up on the next one. Of course, I, I've taken many emails from constituents, especially this week, some very entertaining ones as well, I'll spare you those. By the way, I went to the Healdsburg, they have concerts very similar to ours on Tuesday nights. And it was, it was a great event, a great concert, much like Clayton where everybody comes out. The difference is, there's a lot more rules there. There are no dogs allowed, certainly no wine.
No wine.
No wine, no, nothing, no. So, so I kind of prefer our concerts to, to theirs. I had a couple of meetings with the Oktoberfest Committee. They're working very hard, and Oktoberfest is going to be gangbusters this year. Upcoming, I have the Library Foundation Meeting tomorrow, and then I have the call with the people that are looking for the new city manager coming up. And, and I will be at the concert in the Grove again with my bucket. I urge everyone to come out and give the money to me. That's all.
Great, thank you. Vice Mayor Pierce?
I attended the Regional Planning Committee of the Association of Bay Area Governments. We received a presentation on the, one of the Horizons Papers, planning for the next planned Bay Area 2050, which we have to put together every four years. So that is in process. The next time we have to approve that is 2021. Attended a special Contra Costa Transportation Authority meeting regarding the transportation expenditure plan, which I will touch on toward the end of the meeting tonight. Also attended the Association of Bay Area Governments General Assembly, where all 101 cities and nine counties gather and approve the budget for the year. I also had the honor of presenting several awards to the folks in the region who are doing really good work. And we combined with the Metropolitan Transportation Commission this year to do joint awards. And Contra Costa County received awards for the E-BART project. That was a thrill to be able to award that, since I was on the planning committee that helped put that project together. So it was very rewarding to be able to be there and, and honor both the Contra Costa Transportation Authority and BART for their work there, and particularly Joel Keller, who was our BART director for many years and had a great deal to do with getting that project done. The other award in Contra Costa was to former city manager Steve Falk of Lafayette, for his many, many years of inspirational leadership in the city of Lafayette, and, and for some of the great planning that he was able to accomplish over his career there. I also attended the memorial service for Ellen Tausher. Ellen was a great friend and a mentor to many, many of us. And Ellen was a very special person. She represented us not only in Congress, but certainly was the undersecretary of state who negotiated the, the nuclear weapons ban with Russia way back when. So very, very smart woman, died far too young, and we will miss her greatly. Attended the mayor's conference in Moraga, and the concert, the Mixed Nuts concert, and I have to say, I had forgotten how good they are. They were absolutely spectacular, again, this time. I have a feeling they might be back sooner than later on our list. And then I, I attended the National Association of Regional Council's National Board Meetings in Omaha, where I was re-elected to the National Board, representing the Association of Bay Area Governments. And this is a group that is made up of all of the councils of government around the country, from little tiny ones that are county-sized in places like Texas, where they have 30,000 in the whole county, to places like us that are more like 8 million in our council of governments. But it's a great place to share information and learn. We had a large metros roundtable, where we met with the groups from places like New York and Cleveland, and some of the other big, big councils of government to talk about issues, and we were able to share some of the things we're doing here in the Bay Area. Attended the TransPAC Meeting, Central County Transportation Planning Group, and the Women's Transportation Seminar Awards, where our own Randy Iwasaki, who is the executive director for the Contra Costa Transportation Authority, was awarded the Man of the Year for the National Women's Transportation Seminar. This was not a chapter award, this was a national award, which is pretty prestigious. And so we are very proud to, to be there for him for that one. And then yesterday, I attended a reception out in Antioch at the E-BART station, where BART named one of their conference and training rooms after Joel Keller, who had served for so long and so hard to get E-BART into East County. So it's been a busy couple of weeks.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Wong?
Yes, so I, I too scheduled a call with the firm that's responsible for facilitating the placement of our new city manager. I'm looking forward to giving my thoughts. I think my call is scheduled tomorrow, so. I talked to a number of residents about ongoing concerns. I think we'll hear about some in the near future. And I also received my preparation packet for the upcoming Fourth of July Parade, so I am anxiously anticipating, participating in the parade this year.
Good.
Great, thank you. And I think.
By the way, we need volunteers.
Fourth of July Parade, I think the city is still looking for volunteers. So if anybody's interested in just sharing a couple hours, even an hour, and it could be as simple as doing crowd control, so you can literally be on the side, on the, on Main Street, and kind of controlling your area, but contact our city clerk if you're interested in volunteering for that. And then a couple items for me. On Thursday, June 6th, I also attended the mayor's conference in Moraga. Then on Friday, June 14th, I attended the League of California Cities Policy Committee Meeting in Sacramento. I sit on the Transportation, Communication, and Public Works Committee. And I want to share a couple of things from that, that I think were interesting, a couple of things that were on our agenda. One of them was AB 516, which is Assemblymember Chu's proposal, which would prohibit cities from removing cars, unoperable cars, and, so essentially, what currently happens is cities, if you have cars that are, or owners who have not paid their traffic tickets, more than five tickets, the cities can remove those cars. There's also current regulations that if you, registration of vehicles, it has been more than six months when it's expired, or vehicles have not been moved within 72-hour period, cities can remove those cars under public safety reasons. And Assemblymember Chu's proposal would have removed that authority. The cities could not be doing any of that. So the, the policy committee voted unanimously to oppose that proposition, so we'll see where that goes. Then another interesting thing that we learned about, which is sort of more of a long-term item, which is a potential replacement of gas tax that we currently have in place. So right now, we pay, essentially, as we pump our gas, we pay a portion of, that those monies go to a tax. There's a proposal potentially to replace that with an alternative approach, and the reason for that is, so right now, about half of the electric vehicles in the United States are in California, which means that we're pumping less gas, meaning we're also paying less in, in gas taxes. However, the usage on our roads is still the same. So the impacts are there, but there's going to be, there's a trend towards a funding short wall, fall. So they are talking about a potential kind of road user charge program. It's still far away. They have a lot of issues to deal with in terms of data privacy, how you set the rates, how you deal with urban versus suburban areas. So there's a long way to go, but there's some talk about a potential alternative to the gas tax. Then a few other things that I learned that I thought were very of interest and are not directly related to the Transportation Committee. One of them was, there was a proposal from Assemblymember Ting, AB 1356, which would have provided that any city that had at least 50% support for the cannabis legislation a couple of years ago, would have been required by the state to issue at least one cannabis license for every six liquor licenses. And liquor licenses include grocery stores, so we have, and restaurants, so that's quite many we have. That proposal is not moving forward, apparently, so I think that has died. And then one other note from that committee, or that session that I attended, it sounds like there's going to be also an adjustment to the RIN numbers that most cities are currently have. Some of the speakers talked about potential 40% to 60% increase to our current RIN numbers, so I think there's more coming on that front soon. Then two other items. I'll be having my office hours this Saturday, June 22nd, from 9:00 to 10:00 a.m. at the farmer's market, so if anybody wants to chat up about anything, I'll be there. And then one other announcement. So last time, we provided the very first recognitions under the Making a Difference Program, which was for an outstanding teacher, mentor, or coach. So we're doing these sort of quarterly, approximately in the year, in this pilot program. Our next theme is going to be an exemplary community contributor, volunteer, and/or fundraiser. So if anybody knows of a person who really has these values and is exemplary in many ways to our community, submit a nomination, and you can do that by submitting it by email to claytonmakinadifference@gmail.com, and we'll pick it up from there. And that's all. So then, that moves us into public comment on non-agenda items. So this is the portion of the meeting when any member can address the council on any item that's not on our agenda. And I do have a number of speaker cards, but if anyone else would like to speak, just fill out one of these cards and pass it on to a city clerk. Heather Pruitt, please come up.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members. My name is Heather Pruitt, and I live at 1778 Indian Wells Way in Black Diamond. We are right next to Oak Hollow II, and I've provided a map for you. And if you see Indian Wells Way goes along, and we are actually butted up to Oak Hollow II. One of the concerns that came out, I heard about it first a couple of weeks ago through Next Door. I used to walk my lab quite oftenly, and I would walk down the different cul-de-sacs, and I would see painting and flowers blooming and chat with neighbors, but unfortunately, my dog's gotten older and I don't do that anymore. But on Next Door, it was brought up that Oak Hollow II's board members, their HOA, made the decision, without any discussion with their neighbors, which is totally legal for a board to do, to put in code-locked gates at the end, I highlighted it for you, at the end of Moccasin Court, Buckeye Terrace, and the tall picture on the back is at the end of Feather Circle. So those small gates used to be there. Now they've added an extra rung on top, and they've added a coded locked lock, that you need a code to enter or exit this area. There used to be a sign, if I remember correctly, that said, please shut the gate after entering or leaving, and everyone, to my knowledge, shut it. And it kind of closed off that area. A car cannot drive here, it's a walking pedestrian area. So when I first heard this, I actually worked for a huge company in the real estate division, talking about egress, safety, and you know what? My heart ached. And I thought, there's something wrong with this, and I need to step up and say something. I didn't know who to contact. So I read through the Next Door, and everyone said to contact Ms. Calderon, and I'm sure she got many calls. So I went ahead and seeked out the board, or the HOA company of that, of that neighborhood of Oak Hollow, and I drafted a letter and sent it to their board. I have not heard back from them. And I am not sure, as a resident of Black Diamond, and a concerned resident of Clayton, of who to address about this. But here's my concern. A child gets hurt, who's maybe in the age that they can be out on the street themselves, they can't get through that gate, plus they have a bicycle. There are a lot of elderly folks that walk through our neighborhood, Indian Wells Way, Black Diamond, through Oak Hollow and back. If they're weak, or they start feeling flush, or there's an emergency, they can't get through, they don't have that code. Or they do have the code, and they're scared, right? They're pushing buttons and it's not opening. They're not a, I couldn't jump the fence at my age. I definitely could not jump the high fence. And if I remember correctly, a high fence like this should have a panic bar to get out. There are no panic bars on this high fence. So with that also, I went ahead and called the HOA management company again, and I said, tell me about your pool, because we have a pool. And he, I said, what are the locks like on there? Do you have codes for people? He said, oh, no. Ms. Pruitt, we have two, two doors. One, you have to exit by putting a key in to get out. My heart sank again. And the other one is a knob that you turn. And I thought, okay, in an emergency, you're going to know to go to that knob one and not this one? And in an emergency, you are going to be going down Moccasin Court, or Buckeye Terrace, or Feather Circle, and get to the end and go, I can't get out, I can't get out, I can't get out. So I'm pleading to all of you, and anyone in the audience, if there's an answer of who people should go to, to plead with this HOA board, to remove the coded gates? And I've lived in my home for 15 years, and there's never been a lock on any of these. And you walk right into another neighborly street. So it's not like it's a private, I mean, they're calling these streets private, and that's why they're saying they can do that, but it's, they're used every single day, every single day.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And just, and do have a couple other speaker cards on the same topic, so I think, just, I, you know, we, a lot of us, I think all council members have received some information about this. It's not on the agenda, so we can't address it today. However, I do want to just note that our, and it is also, it's not the city property, it is private property, and it's an HOA matter to an extent. However, our city is looking through some of the boxes that go back to when this development was first approved, to see if there's anything in those documents. So we are doing, as a city, some of the research right now, but I, we don't have anything to provide you in terms of answers today, and in part because it's not an agenda item also. So just, I would encourage you to just stay informed and keep, keep in, keep at it. So we'll, we'll see where we get, and we'll report once we have some results from our city research. But Linda Minorsky?
Thank you, Mayor, and Vice Mayor, and city council members. Linda Minorsky, 805 Chert Place, and I'm also in Black Diamond. So I will just say that these gates were installed in early May, and I immediately sent an email, so I'll be one on the city council and Gary Napper. And you responded to me immediately, as did Gary, and we've been going back and forth. And there was research done, and he said that it does not appear that there was ever a public easement in the original plans. But the solution, I think, would be for the city to pursue prescriptive easement. Now, I've lived in Clayton for 20 years. I'm a block over from Feather Circle. I have always used that path to go to the library, to go to downtown Clayton, to go to the farmer's market, or parades, or whatever. And I'm not alone. Everyone in our community does. Everyone in their community, Oak Hollow II. People in Chaparral Springs cut through the other way. People from up the hill come down through Black Diamond and go through. So it is a very, very much used path, especially Feather Circle, where there is now this huge black gate, and I did send pictures as well to all of you. I mean, I find it, it is a safety hazard, yes. It is also, I believe, in violation of ADA code. There is no button for someone in a wheelchair or with a handicap to enter their code, and so the door would swing open. There is a man who lives in their very community, who my daughter saw struggling with his cane and his two dogs trying to enter his code to get through. So I just think it's, it's an insult to everyone in Clayton. This is, if nothing else, it's a community that prides itself on being warm and, and being a community, and sharing paths, and, and here we have a community deciding, for whatever reason, and I have heard many, they're blocking thieves because they've had car break-ins. Well, they can go through Indian Wells very easily. They can also hop the little split-rail fence that's next to the big black gate, or go over the shorter ones. So I don't think it stops thieves. It does stop people from walking through their private streets, which they seem to believe their homeowners' dues entitle them to. So does that mean that Chaparral Springs should close off the path that goes from Clayton Road, where you can walk through their community? Does it mean that we in our community should put a gate? Does it mean that we in our community should put a gate on Jolpen Loop to close off that path where people come through?
Great. Thank you. Thank you very much. Louise Compton?
My name's Louise Compton. I'm a resident also of Black Diamond. And I think I sent an email to most of you too with my... Talking about how I feel about the gates. My husband and I moved here about four years ago. And when we first came, we read the article about Clayton being the most, one of the most walkable cities. And we use that, we use, we walk down, and as you can see in your map, we walk down and walk through either Buckeye Terrace or... And we do that every other day at least. So we always take a walk. We walk down to, between the golf, the golf course. And sometimes we go to the library. Sometimes we walk on the George Cardenay Trail and go back up to Oakhurst and then come around and we make a loop. So... And many of our neighbors do as well. And right now, they're just jumping the fence. I can squeeze through the fence. My husband has a little bit more problems because he's not as flexible. But I also agree that I think it is a... I just can't believe that they can put locks there. It seems like there has to be an understood easement or something, or a prescriptive easement. I've read the rules of prescriptive easement and sure seems to apply, but someone has to go to court if Oak Hollow II does not do anything. Someone has to go to court and file these papers. I think it's about $500 to do that. So... And I don't know if the city should be the ones to do that or the fire marshal. I mean, I would think the... I don't know, but I think the fire department, I haven't talked to anyone there, but I think the fire department would have something to say about the safety in case the community needs to be evacuated. And here they have locks there. And even though supposedly everyone has a key, the code, it could be that people don't or people are visiting or something. So in any case, I hope that the city of Clayton is able to help us.
Great. Thank you. Then Brent Brinkerhoff?
I want to speak as one of the members of the council.
Okay. Okay. Perfect. And I think it was on the same topic as well. So perfect. Thank you. And like I said, you know, we will, we will, our city staff is still looking into this as well from our perspective. So we'll see. And then I have a card from Cindy Knapp.
I'm Cindy Knapp. Gosh, give me 100 students and I'm great, but like 10 adults. I'm here today, I live at 5 Kensington Court in Clayton, and I'm also a second grade teacher at Mount Diablo Elementary. And about a year and a half ago, myself and another teacher wanted to take the kindergarten chickens that they raise every year, every spring. And we found out that Clayton does not allow chickens. And we were kind of surprised by that. So recently, we started looking into it. And so I'd like to just open the dialogue or have some, something put on the agenda perhaps to talk about why we don't allow chickens. When I looked into it about, there's 19 surrounding cities and we're one of three. Pittsburgh and San Pablo are the only other two cities that do not allow chickens. All the other surrounding cities follow the code ordinances of the county and they've recently changed and have allowed chickens as well as those other cities. And I know that we don't have animal control here, so we abide by those same county codes. And the county now does have, they have allowed chickens in their cities with guidelines, of course. We don't want roosters and things like that. But I know a lot of families that have them and are surprised by that, and I was surprised. And those families that actually do have them are very, they're nervous and surprised that they don't have. So I'd love to open dialogue and see about maybe looking into some provisions that we can make. So then all those kindergarten chickens don't go away from Clayton and stay here. So, thank you.
Great. Thank you. And it's not an agenda item, but I do think the city has looked into this a little bit in the past. And we have sort of coyotes snatching our cats and dogs sometimes too. So I think that may have been part of the discussion at some point, but let's see. Maybe it's time for us to look at it again. So let's see. Go ahead.
If the council's interested, we could put this on a work plan to bring back some information for you in terms of what we last did. Unfortunately, right now, we're very short of staff, so I probably would not expect that this would come up in terms of a work product that we could get information back to you until the new community development director is onboard and hired. We're working with a part-time community development director and a part-time assistant planner. And we don't have the capacity right now to take on the work, but we can keep it on the list if that's the pleasure of the majority of the council.
Sure.
I was gonna raise it at item number...
Yeah. So why don't we put it on somewhere in the work plan and realizing we're pretty short staff right now, but at some point, I think it'd be a good discussion at least to have what the pros and cons are and see if there's anything to be done. Perfect. I don't have any other speaker cards. Is there anyone else who would like to address the council? Seeing none, we'll close public comment, which takes us into item nine, public hearings. We do not have any today. Going into item number 10, action items. Our first action item is 10A, consideration of second reading and adoption of city-initiated ordinance number 488, extending the existing time extension waiver of certain onsite parking relief for specified land uses in the Clayton Town Center area for an additional three years through June 30th, 2022. And I don't know if we have our community development director here or...
As I said, we're very short staff. So I'll be wearing that hat on David Walter Ring's behalf tonight. He had a prior commitment. But again, council, this was an introduction and first reading of this city-initiated ordinance back on your June 4th, 2019 meeting. This is the second reading this evening and the adoption of the ordinance. So staff is recommending that you move forward with the second reading by title only and waiving for the reading thereof and adopt the ordinance as recommended from your prior meeting. I do not believe we had any public comments at your first meeting on this agenda item, but again, it is an agenda item that you can take public comment on before you take your action.
Perfect. Thank you. And I'm assuming there are no clarification questions from staff since it is the second reading. So let me open up a public comment. I don't have any speaker cards, but if anyone would like to address the council, please step up. Seeing none, we'll close public comment and bring it back to the council for action.
I'm gonna do it this time. I'd like to move that the, see if I get this right, that the city clerk read ordinance number 488 by title number only and wait for the reading. The second.
So that's been moved in second. And all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposeds? Seeing none, that passes unanimously. Go ahead.
Ordinance number 488, an ordinance amending section 17.37.030.C waiver period of the Clayton Municipal Code for the purpose of extending from June 30th, 2019 through June 30th, 2022, the parking waiver provision in the Town Center area, ZOA-03-19.
Okay. You wanna go for it? Next motion?
This one's longer. I'd like to move that we adopt ordinance number 488 with the finding that the enactment of this ordinance is not subject to California Environmental Quality Act because CEQA only applies to projects that have the potential for causing a significant effect on the environment and this activity is not considered to be a project. It can be seen with certainty that it will not have a significant effect or physical change to the environment.
Second. So it's been moved in second. And all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposeds? Seeing none, that passes also unanimously. And takes us to item 10B, which is consideration of resolution establishing a preferential residential parking permit pilot program on designated public street portions of the Regency Drive and Rialto Drive neighborhoods to alleviate on-street parking issues associated with hikers and users of the nearby Mount Diablo State Park Regency Gate Trailhead. And I believe we have a staff report either from police chief or city engineer or both.
Yes. All right. Okay. So we're here to talk again about the Regency Drive and Rialto Drive preferential permit parking pilot program. This issue was first brought to the city's attention at the May 15th, 2018 city council meeting during public comment. At that meeting, there was discussion about issues that the neighborhood is facing regarding hikers parking in their neighborhood and taking up all available parking spaces mainly on weekends and holidays. The issue has been discussed at further council meetings and an ad hoc committee was formed to study the issue and come up with solutions. That committee met. I presented at the March 19th, 2019 council meeting, a proposed pilot program. There was a lot of discussion there about concerns with what was proposed and council sent the item back to the ad hoc committee to clarify some of those issues. The ad hoc committee met again and we talked about a number of items. Just to go back for a minute, at the March council meeting, council had, we had talked about what I have on the screen right now, which is the area to be included in the pilot program. And there was option one, which is essentially all of Regency Drive and Rialto Drive minus a few places that don't have homes in front of it. And then option two, that is lesser of an area. Council had talked at the March meeting that it seemed the preference was option two, but there was no decision made regarding option one and option two. So for something for you guys to think about tonight is to finalize if it's going to be option one or option two as far as what areas are included. At the ad hoc committee meeting, we visited a number of topics, which included how many residential permits should be issued, how many guest permits should be issued, the placement of signage and how many signs would be needed, the hours and days of operation and the cost of permits. It was discussed at that ad hoc committee meeting that people felt it should be one residential permit per vehicle registered to the address within the permit area, that there should be up to eight guest permits allowed per residence. The signage, the city engineer explained to the group, his recommendation that 20 additional signposts would be needed in that area. And this was mainly due to the terrain and the slopes and the elevations and curves and having those signs visible so that people that are coming into the area can see them and they act as a visual deterrent. The days and hour restriction originally had been proposed from 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM. The ad hoc committee asked that it be extended till 6:00 PM, feeling that that would allow them more access to their parking spaces throughout the day. There was discussion about how much a permit should cost. And I spent quite a bit of time trying to come up with a formula that was reasonable based on how much time it would take staff and then actual costs of the permit materials and the office supplies. And that is all spelled out in the staff report. So I have put together a pilot program that you all have reviewed that spells out how the pilot program would work, that it would be for a 12-month period. And the fiscal impact to the city would be for the cost of the signs. So that is going to depend on which option you choose between one and two, ranging from about $14,500 to around $22,000 for the signs. The cost recovery would be on the actual permits and permit supplies. That's what the permit costs would cover. That sums it up.
Great. Are there any questions of staff?
No more questions. Thank you.
Okay. So then let's open up a public comment. I do have a number of speaker cards. And like I said earlier, if anyone else would like to speak, just fill out one of these cards and pass it on to a city clerk. First speaker, Mark Montijo.
Thank you. I'm just here to voice my support for the parking permit pilot program as it is. And thank you very much. I'm really looking forward to getting some relief out of our problems. Thank you. That's all my only comment.
Great. Thank you. Next speaker, and I'm sure I'm not going to pronounce this right, Benaz Atanasopoulos. I'm sure I totally got it wrong. I'm sorry.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Benaz Atanasopoulos and I live on Regency Drive. Sorry. I live on Regency Drive. And we have moved to this address on Regency Drive 43 years ago. I'm one of the old timers. And we moved to Clayton for the natural beauty and tranquility. We have enjoyed this at the produce of the area for many years. But recently or recent years, on weekends and holidays, our street is invaded by the hikers parked cars. And these cars are parked bumper to bumper. Our street has turned into a parking lot. And we do not appreciate this. And my, for example, another thing is when my family come to visit us, they complain about not getting a parking spot in front of our house, especially we are all elderly and some are disabled like me. And this is embarrassing and problematic. And another thing I gotta tell you is I'm afraid of backing my car out of my driveway. I am concerned that I'm going to hit a parked car. And this is upsetting to me. Every time I wanna come out of my driveway, I'm afraid I'm going to hit a car. And then another thing I wanna tell you, it's very upsetting to me, is I resent picking up garbage, a dirty, bloody pad in my front yard, dog poop and in my front yard. And this is all disgusting, okay? I and old ladies shouldn't every Monday come and do these things for the people who are not responsible and they call themselves hikers and they can go hike someplace else. This has become our lifestyle. I and my neighbors work very hard five days a week so we could relax and enjoy our weekends. We do not deserve these problems. We work very hard and pay our taxes. What do these people do for us? And we should not let these visitors come and turn our town into a parking lot and ruin This is not fair. This is not right. We should not let some outsider dictate our lives. We need to fix this big problem. We must make this right for me and my neighbors, please. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Next speaker is Jeff Weiner.
Council members, mayor and vice mayor.
Raise your microphone.
What? Go down? Oh, wait. The only thing I have going for me is my height. Thanks. As a result of the last council meeting, we held two neighborhood meetings, March 29th and March 30th, on the permit proposal. I want to thank the council very sincerely for providing us Hoya Hall free of charge for those meetings. They were well attended. We had great discussions. We met new friends. And of the 30 homes that were representative, there were a lot more people at 30 homes. Only one did not want the permit. There was some discussion on the nuances, but just one said, "No, we don't think we need anything like that." I want to thank Councilmen Juan and Wolf for their subsequent holding of the meeting with the residents and listening to our concerns after that meeting. So we're here today hopefully to have council approve the pilot program and give us relief from the invasion of outsiders coming here to avoid only a $6 park fee and bring their dogs, which are not permitted, into the park. Most are not avid hikers. We talk about the hikers a lot, but what I see is people with kids, with backpacks, with kids, they're not hiking the six miles. They're strolling in the park. Okay? So what I think we could do is offer them opportunities, which is done by the map there, to give them the opportunity to park in the area but not upset us like my neighbor just said. I support the pilot and all of us do also, and I offer a suggestion to take a look at the cost. I think the cost with the police chief did has been much fairer. I think it helps people who only have one car. And there are a number of us who are elderly, even older than me, that only have one car and I have four and I should pay more than the others and make it reasonable. I like the idea that the visitor park is a one-time fee. We could share them among ourselves. I think after this pilot, we should look at that and see if that could be the one I think after this pilot, we should look at that and see if that could be the one-time fee for all of us, for our own residents, cars could be applicable. Because these things don't change. I looked, no one has moved on our block or on Rialto in the last year. We have the same houses, we have basically the same number of cars. All we need to do is identify my car as a resident, which is not going to change, versus somebody who's non-resident. There's really no reason to do it on an annual renewal and make more work for the city and more cost for us. At least, that's my opinion. But let's look at that after the pilot is done. I just think it could be an easy fix for all of us. There's no need to reiterate all the issues caused by the out-of-towners. Nothing but rain has mitigated the problems that we've had. I don't want to go about my grandson's party this year. It was a disaster for me. I was really nervous, more than normal. Thank goodness I have good neighbors that allowed us to use their driveway. It was unfortunately the only weekend in February that it didn't rain. As our neighbors said, they can't have their family over, and I think one of our neighbors will talk about other family events that have been impacted. We're excited about the program. Thanks again for listening to us and taking this action. It's only a one-year pilot. Maybe we could all learn from this pilot and let's go forward. Thank you.
Great, thank you. And next speaker, Eric Rain.
I live at 176 Regency Drive. The issue is the volume of visitor traffic through Regency Gate. Mount Diablo State Park and the Dana Hills homeowners association have created and are maintaining a nuisance by allowing unlimited unrestricted access to the park through a gate that does not have ADA access, sanitary facilities, trash collection, or parking to support the current amount of visitor traffic. The city attorney should have pointed this out and the fact that the state park is currently involved in litigation for a similar nuisance in the town of Diablo on the other side of the park right now. I cannot understand how getting local property owners to pay to restrict the parking in front of their homes will do anything than get people to race down to the end of the street to see if they're still parking down at the end of the street where you're planning to maintain it. And then when they don't find it, I'm sure they're going to drive very slowly back down out till they go back down to Mitchell Canyon, right? No. This does nothing to address the speeding, the erosion that's going on, because if you're not looking at it, the end of the road now is starting to erode from the visitor traffic where there is no path. It doesn't deal with the trash or the sanitary issues. The state park needs to address, to restrict the visitor traffic to a level that eliminates the negative impact to the community. It needs to provide for the ADA access, the trash collection facilities, the sanitary facilities at this location. It is not up for the local residents to pay for the state park to maintain this nuisance. Unless these issues are going to be addressed by the state park by December 31, 2019, in a manner that reduces this nuisance by reducing the visitor traffic to the gate that maintains it, I myself, I will pursue the legal protection offered to protect my quiet enjoyment of the house. Mitchell Canyon, the gate hours there are 8:00 AM to sunset, and it costs you to get in there and they restrict the parking and they regulate it. There is no regulation going down at Regency Drive. Why not take the $22,000 you're planning to spend, the rest of the money you expect us to spend, and we use that to legally have the state park fix the problem or restrict it, instead of us burning money that is just working on a symptom of that? Mount Diablo needs to stay, Mount Diablo State Park needs to pay for this. It is not up to the residents. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, Nancy Top.
Hi, my name is Nancy Top. I'm a Clayton resident. I have an objection to one of the agenda items. It's Agenda Item 10B, Report, Page 5, the fifth paragraph. It says, "Once preferential parking permit signs have been installed on Regency and Rialto Drives, it is envisioned there be a 14-day warning period before any violation citations are issued. Warning-only citations would be issued during this time, along with providing written information about alternative and preferred parking locations, such as the Mount Diablo State Park's parking lot located at the end of South Mitchell Canyon Road. Please note that Regency Drive has been a long-term access to an official hiking entrance of Mount Diablo State Park, referred to as Regency Gate, which opens to Donner Canyon. For people unfamiliar with the structure of large state parks such as Mount Diablo, please be aware that the most large, that most large state parks have both driving entrances and multiple hiking entrances. Mount Diablo State Park has multiple hiking entrances, both on the Clayton, Walnut Creek, and Danville sides of the park. Regency Drive has been an access to Mount Diablo State Park entrance for over 40 years, since the late 1970s. I would like to provide Clayton City Council with the following documents regarding Regency Drive as a long-term access to Mount Diablo State Park. 1982, Mount Diablo State Park First Edition Trail Map states, 'Donner Canyon Loop. Drive east beyond the town of Clayton and past Dana Hills to the Regency Woods Development. Turn right on Regency Drive and follow the street, which eventually curves right to its dead end. Walk down to Donner Canyon, beyond the street barrier, and through the state park gate on your left.' There are subsequent editions of the trail map, our second edition, 1985, third edition, 1987, fourth edition, 1991, fifth edition, 2003, sixth edition, 2009, seventh edition, 2012, and we're currently working on the eighth edition. In each of these, it mentions Regency Drive is an access. The other thing I'd like to submit is a picture of the Regency Drive hiking access from the 1989 general plan for Mount Diablo State Park. Shows a picture of the Regency Drive trailhead. And it says, "The trailhead to Donner Canyon in the north side of the park is popular for Clayton residents." This shows, a lot of people have said, well, it was, there was a locked gate back in the 80s. Well, actually, back in the 70s, the late 70s, there was a locked cattle gate, but right next to it is a hiking gate, which was a swing gate, and it has all the proper marks of no dogs, no camping, no bikes. So I'd like to submit that. The next thing I'd like to submit is a sample of newsletters published by the Mount Diablo State Park Cooperating Association referencing hikes being led out of Regency Gate from as early as the late 1970s. Two of the letters I'm going to submit is 1979, Save Mount Diablo, MDI April on the Mountain, and 1981, Mount Diablo Interpretive Newsletter, which describes hikes being led out of Regency Park. I have oodles of newsletters. These are just some of the earliest ones I found, and I'm the archivist for Mount Diablo Interpretive Association. And in final thing, I urge Clayton to preserve and protect Mount Diablo State Park access from Regency Gate for our children and future generations. And thank you all. Submit this to Janet.
Great, thank you very much. Next speaker, Natalie Montijo.
Thank you. I'm Natalie Montijo. I also live on Regency Drive, and I too wanted to, brevity being the soul of scholarship, add my voice and support. And just listening to my neighbor Nancy, the archivist, I have great respect for what you're doing and I would love to see your materials, but I dare say that back in the first, second, and third editions, Regency was not the populous place that it is now. There are several developments that are new, including the Toll Brothers development. They couldn't have anticipated that we'd have three kids, each kid have a car, and a whole bunch of friends that go with it, nonetheless, that we'd have a band that we'd need to have come with instruments and need a place to park every weekend. We do appreciate your consideration. We look forward to this pilot program. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker, Daniel Walsh.
City council folks, thank you for listening to me. Usually I say I don't want to be here and talk in front of you. Today I want to talk in front of you. First off, I want to get back to what some of the things have been said. Regency Drive, it's a fire-access road, okay? It's not ADA accessible. And nobody here has been talking about closing the gate. I don't know why that just keeps getting brought up. So I don't want to go back on the stuff that we've gone through. You already know what the history is. I'm just saying that, we're just again asking that we have the same quality of life as any other resident in the city of Clayton. Since April, we've had to deal with ongoing issues, issues previously stated. On Easter Sunday, we had no place to park. We had to fight for parking spaces for our families. Our neighbors were kind enough to give up their driveways just so that we can have a few guests over. On Memorial Day weekend, we didn't have one day of rest. All three days, we had congestion and trash, and it was horrible. On June 1st, we had an engagement party for my daughter. We started at 3:00 because of all the problems with the parking. That was a Saturday. We had to borrow five neighbors' driveways to be able to accommodate our guests because we couldn't find any parking. As soon as you move a car, these people come in and swoop in and take the parking spot. This is a quality of life issue, you know? I'm a resident of Clayton. I think I deserve the same quality of life as anybody else. So we're asking for the permit parking so that we can get some relief, and I vote for the proposal. So let's give it a try and see how it goes for a year. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, Teri Denslow.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. For the record, I want it to be known that I'm not opposed to relief of the quality of life concerns that have been noted by the Regency residents. I do, however, want to express three specific concerns with the proposal that I've seen put forth, and I'd appreciate if the council would consider addressing those during the conversations. The first concern noted, according to Section 450 of the Guidelines Relating to Gas Tax Expenditures for Cities and Counties by the California State Comptroller circa March 2019, they have a section in there that outlines expenditures not allowed. And it says, quote, "Cost of constructing or improving a street area for parking purposes." I see in the proposal that the gas tax fund has been earmarked to subsidize the $14,000 or $22,000 cost, and so I'm curious if we are in alignment with state guidelines in regards to that. Second concern noted, if you please, if you refer to, and I would be happy to share any of this information with you, I have many links that I can share with you and email afterward, the Mount Diablo State Park Road and Trail Management Plan circa March 2016, also Mount Diablo State Park General Plan, which was written in 1989, and the Clayton General Plan, those three particular documents. I heard earlier mention that how could it be foreseen that there could be issues with so much overcrowding in parking? Specifically, in the Mount Diablo State Park General Plan, they, and the subsequent documents, they have outlined, quote, "An opportunity, a recommendation to, quote, 'work with the city of Clayton to improve access via Regency Meadows,' sorry, 'via Regency Meadows in accordance with the MDSP General Plan and Clayton's Open Space Conservation Elements while minimizing impact to local residents.'" Additionally, in those documents, they've noted, "There's a public easement through the Regency Meadows Development and property dedicated to the state that is suitable for a small unpaved parking area." So there's discussion in those documents and in the dependencies between Save Mount Diablo and Mount Diablo State Park, talking about the opportunity to work with Clayton when the need arises in that Regency Meadows area. In addition, in the Clayton General Plan, the following is noted, quote, "The city will encourage the state to acquire land to the extent possible along the southern border of Clayton. The city will cooperate with the state in providing access to these facilities." So I question if, in spirit, we're aligned with what, you know, what we're saying in our general plan and what Mount Diablo has done, or what they're saying in their general plan. Earlier in the year, the folks from Mount Diablo came, they talked to you guys about Prop 68. They've expressed an interest in continuing to work with the city, but I don't think they've gotten, from what I understand, I don't think they've gotten a lot of receptive comeback. And I think that there's an opportunity here and it's aligned with the strategy of both of those organizations. And last, very quickly, I know I'm over time here. I would really like to hear the council's discussion around how we will define success of this pilot. I asked this in a previous meeting. I think the response that I got back was if the residents feel happy that the program has alleviated concerns, but as another gentleman mentioned, which residents? This could be kicking the can to other residents and causing proliferation of this issue throughout the neighborhood and dealing really with the symptoms and not the overall problem. So if you can touch on how you define success, I think that that would, you know, help everyone to understand what we can do for longer-term options. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Next speaker, Ray Grimmond.
Good evening, city council. My name's Ray Grimmond. I live at 79 Regency Drive, which is at the top of Hill Regency, just as you come turn left to Rialto. I've lived there for 35 years and listening to all the comments tonight, it's really, what's troubling is that the opposition to this plan is basically about access, and we're not trying to restrict anybody's access. I mean, people can go and park a bus down the bottom of El Molino and walk into Mount Diablo State Park. It's really a matter of parking and how that parking affects our quality of life. So I would appreciate that if you would, when you consider this measure, it really addresses a parking issue and not really an access issue that a lot of people have tried to bring up tonight. And I thank again all the council members for their hard work on this, and hopefully we'll have a positive outcome from it. Thank you very much.
Great, thank you. And I don't have any other speaker card, so before we close, public comment, please come on up. So just please, please state your name and you can provide the card afterwards.
Hi, my name is Shirley Weiner. I live at 133 Regency Drive. I know that Teri has spoken here before, and she mentioned that, well, on several occasions, she criticizes the plan that we want on Regency Drive. And she also mentioned, when she moved back to Clayton, that she specifically asked her real estate agent not to show her anything on our block. It's okay for us to be unsafe and stressed, but not for other people. That's just not going to work, okay? We still have access. There's lots of parking down the street where there are no homes, and there are parking spaces up by the seminary where there are no homes. We don't want to restrict access. We just want our lives back. Thank you.
Thank you. So is there anyone else who would like to address the council? Now is your opportunity. So please come on up if anybody else wants to speak. Seeing none, we'll close public comment and bring it back to the council for discussion. Who would like to start? Councilmember Diaz.
I have several things related to the exhibits that are included in this plan, your program. Firstly, a compliment that the, oh, my microphone's on. Thank you very much. I would like to compliment the citizens of that area, Regency and Rialto, that have finally come together with our staff and have put together this plan, which I believe is what most of the residents are aiming to get enacted for this one-year program, pilot program. The comments that I have are related to, one, the sample signage that's on in this package, and I have a couple of questions. In the document we received, it mentions city and federal holidays, yet the sign only says federal holidays. Do they, yeah. Right. It doesn't say state or all cities, like it does in the verbiage of the plan on page two of the permits, right at the top of the page. Did you find it?
Right, okay. I'm sorry, what was the question?
On page two of Exhibit A. On page two of Exhibit A, it mentions city and federal holidays. This sign is silent on city. Do the federal holidays include all of the cities, so we don't have to be so graphic and explaining what we're meaning there?
Yes, they do.
So, there's more federal than there are city and state?
Yes. When I looked up the federal holidays, they align with the city holidays. What's that?
Okay, I'm just making sure that we're being, you know, completely explanatory what we're prohibiting, when we're prohibiting the parking there or suggesting to. Then, the second thing is, should it say sunset or 6:00 p.m.? I'd just throw that out. And then, finally, where it says violators will be ticketed, shouldn't it say violators, excuse me, violators will be cited slash or towed? That would help me a lot.
So, the council, before you, as the pilot program has proposed, the penalty for violating the permit parking is recommended to be a fine, so it would be a ticket. If council decides that the penalty should be a tow, then we would change the sign. But the sign is just a sample based upon what is being proposed.
No, and I understand that, but I'm in favor of towing if there's a repeated offender, because that's what I'm leading to, is the violation fee or fine is $45. How did that happen? Why isn't it $100?
Okay, so when I looked at that issue, it is in line with what other cities in Contra Costa County have as a fine, and case law that I read and I consulted with the city attorney suggests that cities stay in line with their neighbors for similar violations and fines. You, as a city council, can change that amount if you see fit.
I would, and this is just me speaking, I would prefer a stiffer fine, if that's possible. And I further, what if you have a repeat offender? Because you're likely to have that, because some people may be able to pull $45 out of their pocket and pay the fine and park there again the next time. Are we going to track to see who's violating this?
We can. There is a vehicle code section that would allow us to tow under those circumstances.
Right, and I understand about the towing.
So, we certainly could add that language, ticketed or towed, but I don't think we need to add it to enable us to tow under those circumstances.
Right, and I'm not asking, but I'm asking about repeat offenders for the $45 fine. In other words, I could come in there on a Saturday, I get cited, and I have to pay a $45 fine. Next week, and I come over again, and I violate that again, and then I'm going to pay another $45. To some people, that may be a reasonable parking fee.
Sure.
So, I'm saying, are we going to be able to track that and say if there's a repeat offender, that we take stiffer fine? I don't know. I follow that to the legal council and see.
I do want to clarify, it's the vehicle code that specifically requires agencies to have a standardized parking penalty, so I believe the chief looked at what other agencies in the county were charging, and that's how we got to that $45 penalty. If you were to go significantly beyond that, I think that could put us, if someone wanted to challenge the fine, I wouldn't encourage you to go significantly more than that $45.
No, and that's why I asked the question, what background did you use to determine that? But I am also concerned that there may be some repeat offenders who are going to just say, oh, that's an easy parking fee, I don't mind, I'm going to be up there all day, and they would do it and repeat it on, you know, several occasions beyond. So, I'm concerned that there will be, at least my perception is, there will be repeat offenders, and if they are, what do we do? We just keep citing and giving them the fine again? You know, after a while, you know, it's like, I think what does San Francisco got? If you've got five, they tow your car away or something for parking.
And that's defined in the tow authority section of the vehicle code, so we would follow that.
Yeah, thank you.
Well, in that case, yes, sorry. In that case, I guess that adding or towed would be more of a deterrent to the sign, especially if it's an and/or situation. Certainly, somebody coming out and getting their car towed away would be a deterrent to parking $5 or $6 in the normal lot and having to go through the hassle of getting your car back. I want to look at some of the things and ask the city attorney, I guess, with regard to the allowable gas tax funding of the signage, where are we there? Are we on solid ground?
Okay, apparently, the city engineer did not look into that. Apparently, I understand it was the city manager who had looked at that with the finance director, but we can double-check that. We will ensure that whatever source is being used is allowable. We have a variety of pots of transportation funds, so even if the state has a provision in those funds, doesn't mean we can't access our local major CJ or some of the other funding sources, but we'll make sure that it comes from an appropriate source that's not in conflict with any legal issues.
And to address some of the concerns within our discussion group, I don't see this as an access issue at all. I agree with some of the citizens here who said that, you know, they could park down the street and have the same access that they had back in 1971. And so, I see this more as a parking issue and a quality of life issue, and a temporary pilot program is us saying to the citizenry, we hear you, we're going to try and do something to give you some relief. And if that relief is just on that basis, if the relief is all it takes to make this pilot program a success, then that makes it a success. But certainly, less congestion, whether or not we've kicked the can down the road, we'll know that in a year. Whether or not Dana Hills now becomes the next possibility of another program, I don't know. Also, we have to make sure that we're generally funded properly here so that we're revenue-neutral. We don't want to make money on this. We don't want to lose money either. So, those are the things, I think, when you talk about what is the success of this program, if we do put it into action here, then that, to me, would be a successful program. And we're going to learn a lot in the next, certainly in the next hiking season, whatever that is, once this gets going, as to whether or not it can actually work. But for us to not put it into place, I think would be a mistake. We've listened to the citizens from that area. They're generally aligned. We've had many meetings with them, and I would implore the council to unanimously pass this and to give these people a chance to see if this could actually work. So, that's where I'm, I know that I've talked ad infinitum with the residents, Councilmember Juan and I, and I don't know what else we can say, except that the chief has done a lot of work, the staff has done a lot of work to get this to a reasonable place, and I think that's all we can expect at this point. So, I'm going to vote in favor of this.
Thank you. Councilmember Juan?
Well, first, I want to thank Chief Warren. I think this, the proposal on the table strikes a great balance between the residents' desires as well as enforceability and preserving, you know, a reasonable amount of parking available for the general public. So, I think the goal, especially being open to modifying some of the options, just with pricing, I just want to say thank you. I think it strikes a good balance in that regard. I also don't see it as an issue of access. I think access to the gate is preserved, it's unchanged. I think, as far as parking goes, I think this attempts to allow or provide for a number of available spaces just to the general public as well, while still trying to alleviate some of the concerns that the residents have. So, in that regard, I think that it's well-tailored to that. I similarly feel that success is defined, trying to address your comments. I think success is defined as if it meets the overall residents' desires to achieve increase in their quality of life. And so, for me, if we can do that for these residents, that would be a successful program. And again, I do think that we'll learn a lot after a year. I'm sure we'll hear from many folks, and they'll be able to give us feedback, so, yeah, that's my comments.
Vice Mayor Pierce?
Sure. I will be supporting this program. I still have some concerns about whether this is the first step in a list of sort of radiating issues from this, but I'm hopeful. I think the increased enhanced enforcement up in that area has had some limited results. I realize it's hard to measure because the weather changes, the holidays change. When you have a rainy month, people aren't necessarily up there all the time, so it's really hard for us to tell whether that's made a big difference or not. But I do thank the Clayton PD for being up there and paying attention to what's going on. I also want to thank Chief Warren and our city engineer, Scott Almond, for the work that you guys have done, and all of the city staff have really worked on trying to make sure we have a program that is fair to everybody. I would reiterate, we are not closing the gate. We're simply asking people who are intending to take a hike to walk a little bit further to access the park. And I will tell you, anecdotally, this is somewhat interesting. The article that came out in the Clayton Pioneer caused a bit of a stir, and my family has been involved in Boy Scouts for 35, almost 40 years now, and I got several phone calls because people know I'm on the city council, and they heard about the issues on the Pioneer, and they wanted to know, the boys have a hike on Saturday, and the flyer said, "We're supposed to go in through the Regency gate, but we're afraid to park in the neighborhood. What's going to happen?" And I said, "Well, the boys are going on hike, right? Right?" I said, "They can park in the community park, or they can park in the bottom of El Molino where there are no houses, and actually, the trail access from the bottom of El Molino is much smoother than it is scrambling down that goat path from the end of Regency or the end of Mount Air Parkway." And I said, "So, either way, these are Boy Scouts going on a hike. Anybody else going on a hike, an extra quarter of a mile is not a big deal." So, anyway, after a long conversation with the scout leaders and all of that, they actually came by and picked up one of our trail maps, and I had marked in highlighter where they should park to safely access the park, and they were quite grateful about that. And I also followed up with a note to the district and the council staff to have them let know, other scout troops know, that they should not park on Regency Drive. They should either park in the community park, which has plenty of parking most of the time, or at the very bottom of El Molino where there are no houses. And the unanimous response I got is, they're going for a hike. Another quarter miles, no big deal. So, I would hope that most of the folks who you've seen there, who are renting Zip Cars and other things like that to access the park, would have that same mentality. I suspect that won't be the case, but I think we tried to do that. The one thing I am concerned about, I do think eight guest parking passes is a bit much, but, you know, you guys will all work that out. I suspect most of you won't want nearly that many, but if you do, you know, I hope they don't all come at once. It will be a problem. The other concern I have, and I want to appreciate the language that was put in the pilot program here, is to prohibit the monetizing of the permits. I shared with the council and staff an article about a neighborhood next to the Berkeley Stadium, where people were selling their parking permits for $300 a day and monetizing them, and it became a real problem. And so, I'm glad we have language in there that says, no, we're not going to do that, and I would not have expected any of you to do that, but you never know when someone, maybe even if someone's teenager is going to get some bright idea that this could be worth something. So, we're out there, everybody knows that's not okay. So, I will be supporting this, and I hope it works, and I also hope the problem does not spread to other neighborhoods, because I would hate for us to have to make this citywide. That would just be a real shame. That's not what we're about, so.
So, I have one other question for staff. So, in terms of the towing option, so I'm curious, so in terms of, you know, if an officer comes by and there's a car that doesn't have the permit, so how labor-intensive is writing a ticket as opposed to having a car towed, from a police resource perspective?
Writing a ticket, five minutes or less. Towing a vehicle, 30 to 60 minutes. So, writing a ticket is much quicker and easier.
Yeah, so I think because of that, I would certainly want to at least do the pilot program for ticket-only, because I don't want to also take up too much of our police resource for that task. But let me, a couple of comments from me. So, I do want to thank all the citizens who've been here. I don't know, this has been now a lengthy process, and I know government doesn't move fast at all, so, but I do want to appreciate everybody staying involved, and not just the residents on these streets, but also other residents. And, you know, we don't always agree, and sometimes we have differing opinions, but I do want to remind all of us to be respectful. We want to be sure that everybody feels safe to provide their opinion, whatever it is, and, you know, we'll make a decision based on totality. I do have a couple friendly amendments to some of the, primarily, I think, to the Exhibit A, which does become part of our findings. So, when we talk about, this is on page one of Exhibit A, which is the city council's stated purpose for the program, I do have a couple edits that I'd like to make there. I think the second bullet, it talks about polluted air and whatnot, I'd like to strike that finding. I don't know that we have a basis of staying polluted air, so that I'd like to strike. And then, I would like to add another bullet at the end that talks about something to the effect of, ensure that this program does not supersede other city-on-street parking requirements, including the 72-hour requirement to move your car. I think we talked about that, and I didn't see it anywhere here, so unless I'm missing it, I think we want to make sure that, even if you have a parking permit, you are supposed to move your car every 76 hours.
I think that was in the first draft, I remember that. It says it doesn't supersede any.
We had it, but I don't see it here now. So, if we can just add that as a bullet, that'd be great. Then, in terms of the pilot program itself, I think we're talking about doing it for 12 months, and the reason, the timing when this became really critical, I think, for the neighbors was right around the holidays, because I think that's when a lot of people are hiking about there. So, I would almost suggest that we do it for 15 months, because I think that would get us over the next holiday as well, so that would be.
It's true, next summer. Is that what you're thinking?
No, because I think the staff said that it's going to take at least 90 to 100 days to actually implement it, so it's going to be a year from there, but I would recommend it be 15 months so that it gets us through the holiday, the second 2020 holiday season as well.
I concur.
Okay, that would be my recommendation on that. And then, in terms, so my only sort of two comments in general, I don't, whatever I vote today, I don't want it to be a precedent-setting thing. I do not want to see residential permit programs, parking permit programs, to become citywide issues, so I definitely am not supportive of that. So, I think it has to be very case-by-case. And then, my other comment is on, I do have a concern about the numbers a little bit still. We have 105, our staff counted 105 on-street parking spaces within Option A portion, and by providing up to eight guest parking spaces for the 47 homes, is 376 plus, you know, at least one permit per registered vehicle. So, the numbers are a little bit out of whack, but I realize that this is what I think the neighbors want, so I think we'll try it as a pilot program, but I'm a little concerned about that, but hopefully, it does work out. So, I think those were my friendly edits to the program that I would love to see.
Just to clarify, on the second bullet, are you suggesting to strike just the polluted air clause, but not the entire bullet?
I think I would like to.
Are you suggesting to strike the entire bullet?
I think I would like to strike the bullet, because I don't know that the permit program itself will do that, because people can still park elsewhere. itself will do that because people can still park elsewhere.
I'm sorry.
That's fine.
What was the clarification?
I would like to strike bullet number two.
The entire bullet?
Yeah. I don't think we need it, but I don't think we have the evidence to back that up either.
That's fine. I don't think it's a required finding.
Yeah, it's not a required funding anyway, so. And then like I said, add the bullet about the 70, I think it's 72-hour requirement and then make it 15 months from the implementation date.
Okay. I think those are all reasonable.
I agree.
So any further discussion or is there?
Yes.
Go ahead.
I just want to, since, as I recall, when this issue first came up, there were a number of publications that advertised and promoted hikers the park down there. Do we have some sort of a communication plan that we could send back to them like Diablo Magazine and any hiking, just to say we're going to be implementing this plan and don't be surprised if you come in here and illegally park and don't have your permit, you're going to be cited and/or towed.
I think the best answer we have for that is if there's actual media publications such as Diablo Magazine and others, we can certainly put out the information to them about the permit parking program when we know when it's going to be in effect and say that we're moving forward on that. But the problem we have is, I think, a lot of what we heard from the public was a lot of this is on social media, individual blog sites. We'll put it up on our website, but hopefully they will also contact. But we don't have the staff resources to find every blog site and communicate to those folks, but if anybody has a lot of extra social media time on their hand, we would certainly, you know, encourage you to certainly pass along and share that information with those various blog sites and maybe they can get the information out to their people that watch.
I just think it would be a good face effort on our part to notify as many as we could.
We will not have the staff time to go into the social media, but the print media we can do.
If you targeted, you know, specific, like Diablo Magazine, which I recall was the one that actually promoted it back a year or two ago.
From social, they repeated a social law.
Right.
I just, I'm sorry. Okay, I just want to make sure you're finished. Just a point of clarification to your question with regards to towing, that would not include the sign. What we're saying is actively, we would be only ticketing, but the threat of towing would still be on the sign.
Well, I think a different provision of the vehicle code allows for towing for repeat offenders is what Chief Warren had said.
My point was more toward what Councilmember Diaz had, if you put "or towed" on the sign, it's more of a deterrent.
That's the whole purpose.
That sounds good, too.
And even though we won't be towing.
The options available, though.
Options available.
You don't execute it unless there's something egregious?
Right. Repeat offenders or God knows what.
Or blocking a driveway or, those are all legal things to tow for anyway, parking permit or no.
True, but if it's stated in writing.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that's good.
Okay. Does anybody want to make a motion or any further discussion?
I would move that we adopt the plan as the pilot program as included in the agenda with the modifications that you have mentioned, the modification that Councilmember Diaz mentioned, and focus on option number two to specify.
And I would certainly second that.
Okay, clarification, okay, go ahead. Councilmember Diaz mentioned sunset versus 6:00 PM. I'm a little concerned about that being maybe overly restrictive. This.
And vague.
Yeah.
A little vague.
Yeah, I'd prefer to keep it hard hours.
Yeah, yeah, I think that was, I don't, I was.
That was your intention of the motion?
Yeah, the motion was for the signage change, the verbiage on the signage change.
Adding towed, that was what you meant by.
Yes, not the sunset.
I wasn't sure which one.
I think at the end of the pilot, we can.
Evaluate.
Evaluate whether or not that's a viable change.
People are coming up for evening hikes and will know we might need to do something.
So that's been moved and seconded. Let me just make sure that we got the motion right. So you're saying the motion as it is here with 15 months, with the 72-hour limit included, with the second purpose bullet stricken, with the signage including add towing. Was there another thing?
No, that's correct.
That's it. So on that motion, and that was seconded, on that motion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, seeing none, that does pass unanimously. So thank you.
Thank you, council.
We will continue with our agenda. We have a couple more items left. The next item is Item 10C, which is city council discussion and determination of citizen appointments to two expired terms of office for Clayton Planning Commission for the two two-year terms commencing on July 1, 2019 through June 30, 2021. Let me wait a moment.
You can ask them to be quiet.
So.
It's okay, we have all night, right?
They're going out where it's warm. It's getting really cold in here.
It is cold in here, freezing. I should know better. I should know better, got to wear sleeves.
So earlier this evening, we interviewed two candidates, two incumbent candidates. So I think with that, I think we're just looking for a motion. Actually, do we have to take?
We need public comment.
Hold on, let me actually do a public comment just so that we're correct. I don't have any speaker cards, but if anyone would like to comment, please come up now. Seeing none, we'll close public comment, so let's.
I would like to make a motion that the two applicants, Mr. Clovin or Cloven and Chippero.
Chippero.
Chippero were excellent candidates. They are incumbents and we had no other applicants for the two openings on the Planning Commission. I would move to have them approved.
And I would second that and to say that I've worked with these fellows and they are highly respected, very intelligent, they love Clayton, and I appreciate that they've stepped up again and I have a lot of admiration for those two guys. And so I would certainly second that.
So on the motion to appoint Mr. Cloven and Mr. Chippero to the Planning Commission, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, seeing none, that does pass unanimously. Then we'll move on to Item 10D, which is consideration and discussion of Vice Mayor's status report on the Contra Costa Transportation Authority's potential new transportation expenditure plan for the March 2020 ballot.
And I'll be relatively brief. I asked that this be placed on the agenda so that we can have a discussion when we need to. The Transportation Authority is meeting almost weekly during this month and will be meeting at least twice a month for the next couple of months with the goal to have an expenditure plan finalized and ready to send out to the cities for approval by the end of August. Then we'll spend September and early October getting that approved at all of the cities and the county. The requirement is we must have approval of the same document by a majority of the cities representing a majority of the population in order to submit it to the board of supervisors to be placed on a ballot. So I've handed you all, because there was an erroneous link in the staff report. I sent you late this afternoon the link to the actual staff report for tomorrow night's meeting and I placed on the DSA chart, which is the Down and Dirty Expenditure Plan Draft that we're all looking at right now. And it's going through all of the four subregional groups to get comments. The proposal is to have what we call an outcome-based ballot measure to add a second half-cent sales tax to provide for Contra Costa Transportation projects and programs and transit. So right now, the way it's laid out, we have approximately 50% of the ballot measure dedicated to improving transit and access to transit. One of the things we're looking at doing is actually coordinating the various transit options so that they actually connect and you could get from one side of the county to another, which is kind of a novel concept that people would like to be able to avail themselves of. It's also to put some investment into what we're calling a cleaner, safer BART. That means safer stations, better access, hopefully a better experience locally. The challenge we face there is that our trains that go through Contra Costa County go through the other two counties as well. And we may clean ours up and harden our stations, but maybe the rest of them don't get done. So we want to work with BART. BART has committed to work with us on doing that. They are also working with the other counties to try to enhance that as we go along. If you look on the page that is 1.1-5, which is the first page, you'll see the first blue category is make bus, ferry, commuter rail and BART safer, cleaner and more reliable. What we want is more predictable. And this means adding services and it means a lot of money has to be raised to do that, but if we can do that and help people get out of their cars, we're also talking about things like more customized shuttles. You may have seen the article in the paper today about the Tri Delta Transit on-demand access to the Antioch and Pittsburgh stations. Anybody within two miles can dial up Tri Delta and say, pick me up at my house and take me to the station because they have very limited parking there. We're talking about making those kinds of services potentially available through the existing transit companies and other services throughout the county. It's going to take some work, but we think that that really helps to offset the cost of trying to provide parking. One of the things we're also actually talking about is partnering with other property owners who may be within proximity of a BART station to get co-op agreements to share parking during the day where they would actually be able to monetize empty parking spaces and provide some local parking that is not run by BART. The second blue category there is affordable, safe transportation for children, seniors, veterans and people with disabilities. That's your Safe Roots to School money. One of the things we're discussing is the potential to do discounted youth passes on all buses, if not free bus passes for students. We think that might have some real benefit in many parts of the county, but it won't work everywhere. So we're looking at what that might look like as well. Do we just enhance the bus programs that they have like they have in Southwest County and in the La Mirinda area, or is there some other alternative that might be more efficient for us to run? So we're looking at some of those things to try to help get kids to school without jamming up the roadways around all of our schools. The local improvements to streets and roads, we're looking at a 15% return to source. Measure J has an 18% return to source. This would be in addition to that. The SB1 funds that we are now receiving virtually double what we were getting from just Measure J return to source. And in some of the larger cities, they are more than that. For us, it's a little less than double, but this would be an additional 15% on top of that. So while there will never be enough money for local streets and roads, there's a point where you have to get the right balance that the voters will approve. And our polling tells us we have to be very careful about that. And if we go too much in return to source, the voters will turn it down and then we have 15% of nothing instead of, you know, 15% of something that is meaningful. We're also talking about having a separate category besides the local return to source that focuses on major arterials, that primarily ones that go from, through one city into another or something like that. Some are primary corridors. You'll see there it's Ignatia Valley Road, but we're talking about making that railroad to Kirker Pass to Ignatia to the freeway, that entire length, and making that a corridor that can be managed and improved as a block. And so you would coordinate all of the traffic signals from the delta to the freeway. There are other corridors like that throughout Contra Costa County and this would be geographically equitable for the four subregions based on the size and then that would be a competitive grant that would come up through the regional working groups and to the authority for approval. But a way to take some of the burden, I know Walnut Creek struggles to take care of Ignatia Valley Road all by itself. This would be a way to enhance that and coordinate through the whole corridor, trying to get some level of predictability to the commutes on these major corridors. You can certainly tell where the lights are timed and where they're not. And I have to compliment Walnut Creek on what they've done with Ignatia Valley Road. Once you clear the metering light at Oak Grove, you can usually get to the freeway in the morning with one, maybe two stoplights in a pretty expeditious way. Getting to the Oak Grove light, you're stopping at almost every signal.
Is Oak Grove designed to slow people down?
Yes, it's.
That's on purpose, right?
It's on purpose.
Okay, because it totally seems like it.
Yeah, it is definitely on purpose, a metering light that was put in by Walnut Creek to pace the traffic going through the city of Walnut Creek. That was done intentionally to give favor to the Walnut Creek folks having access to Ignatia. But the whole point is if we can synchronize the entire corridor, then it's going to work better for everybody. Technology didn't used to be able to do that, it can now. And so we need to do that on all of the major corridors like that. We're talking about doing what they call complete streets on many more of our roads throughout the county, adding bike trails and safe sidewalks and making things safer. Concord has done a good bit of it. You've seen a lot of it in Walnut Creek as well. And that only really applies where you actually have the space to do it. In Pleasant Hill, Geary Road, they actually took out a lane of traffic and added bike lanes and sidewalks to make it safer for the kids to go back and forth to school. And it actually has slowed the traffic down and made it safer in that segment. If you know where the firehouse is on Geary Road in Walnut Creek slash Pleasant Hill, then that actually has worked out very, very well. And that would be on a case-by-case basis, obviously. Then we're talking about relieving traffic on the highways and the interchanges. This is where the 684 interchange comes in. This is talking about helping to fund the remaining four phases of the 684 interchange improvements to make it safer. We also have money from SB1. We have money from RM3 targeted for those phases as well. We're doing the third phase right now. That one is funded. This would help provide funding for the others. This would also provide funding for relieving the congestion on Highway 4 and 242 and some of the other areas around the county. It also would actually very likely modernize and add safety improvements to Boars 1 and 2 of the Caldecott Tunnel in conjunction with Caltrans. Any of you who have to come eastbound in the afternoon, you know that those tunnels are really, really dark and we can't make them wider, but we certainly can make them safer. And so those are things that we are looking at doing as well. And so this is just the initial draft. We're going to continue to work on that. We're working on the policies, continuing with the urban growth boundary that we have, the urban limit line, which actually expires in the county in 2026. This would deal with that and it would ask each of the cities, we haven't got the language written yet, but our direction that we're moving is to incorporate into this measure a requirement that each jurisdiction either adopt what was the urban limit line after 2026 and abide by that or adopt a new one and still be bound by it in order to get their local. local return to source money. So there are quite a few of those policies that we have, compliance with the urban growth boundary as a condition to get your return to source money. Some of those policies are being suggested to be continued in this measure, so that this would go for 30 years from now, so it would carry on beyond what Measure J requires. Because theoretically, if we don't do something about the urban growth boundary, it could go away in 2026, and then there's no incentive for people to follow those rules. So I'm open to any questions. I would like to be able to just include a link to the packets in the future, but I think maybe we will not do that officially. I will just say, go to the CCTA website to read the packet, because you don't need another 200 pages in your packet.
We also need to download it into our packet, public for record.
You know, we do it for every other agency, Mala. Can we not include an electronic link and not have to print the whole thing?
I think you can do just a link, right? Is a link...
I mean, the electronic link to the packet...
A link is fine, right?
I mean, we use it for every other agency I sit on. We use an electronic link in the agenda packet as the agenda packet. So I'm hopeful. Otherwise, I'm going to say no, I'm not going to include it, and I will rely on you to go to the website, and I'll tell you where it is. It's just insane to have to download 200 pages and print them off. I understand that, but...
So I have a question.
Anyway, yes, questions?
Did I hear you right when you said if you increase the return to source number too high, then you'd get...
We lose votes.
People don't vote for a return to source?
Correct.
That seems counterintuitive.
Well, it does, but what's interesting is in the polling, potholes don't rise to the same level of smoothing your commute on major arterials and fixing freeways and adding transit.
I see.
I mean, potholes come in at about eight on the list.
This layout, I was, how do I interpret, like, this, we're Transpac, right? But it's all blank all the way down, so this is, so Transpac, WCTAC, so some of these are TBD, but like, what is the significance of highlighting these items? I'm just trying to understand the layout.
Right. And it's, and I can't tell you, oh, Central. That's what you should be reading.
So we're Central, right?
Yeah, we're Central.
So Transpac has its own column, but it's blank all the way down?
Well, Central is Transpac, and if you go to the next column over, southwest is SWAT.
So, oh, okay.
Yeah, it's kind of...
Like a subtotal, maybe?
Yeah, it's kind of weird. It's kind of weird. But that's, Central is Transpac.
I mean, all Clayton is a part of Central.
Yes, exactly.
And that is the component that we would fall under?
Yeah. It is.
So, thank you very much. This is actually very helpful and very informative, and it's great to have one of us, our vice mayor, be part of this in a very detailed level, because I think it is, you know, we have slightly different perspectives, too, as opposed to some of the other cities that are right next to the freeway, so it's good to have our voice be heard there as well and expressed. I have one quick question. So when you talked about some of the BART improvements and the BART station improvements, so how do you, how do you work with BART to make sure that whatever monies will be provided would be used in the Contra Costa stations, or do you somehow condition...
Oh, it's conditioned, exactly. Very, very strictly. The money we have in the current measure is actually conditioned, that we must approve it by the subregion in which the station is, and then it has to go to the full authority. And there are performance measures that they must meet in order to get the funds, and they have to match it. I mean, we're not providing all the money for it. We learned our lesson. We don't give them carte blanche.
Yeah, okay, good. And then I guess my second question is, so a lot of these projects, I mean, the timeframe for some of these, I mean, I know some of them are still in, there could be others, but, I mean, what's the sort of range of timeframe for implementation on some of these?
For the physical projects, for the actual construction projects, probably within the first 10 years. For instance, with Measure J, even though it's a 30-year plan, we bonded for the physical improvements, and we are within a year or two of being done with all of them. And so it really pays to advance the money to the front end and get those projects in the ground so that the people can actually use them right away. And then we have the ongoing operating money that runs the other 20 years or so, and this would be very similar to that.
Okay. Any other questions or comments?
When can we get the widening of Ignatio Valley Road done?
Actually, the city of Concord has put the widening of Ignatio Valley from Michigan to Cowell on the list.
From Michigan to Cowell?
Yeah, because that really is where people turn and go the other way. So it's about a lane of traffic that would smooth that commute considerably. So, but, you know, it's a project we aspire to a long time.
The easier you make that road, the more you encourage through traffic from like, you know, Brentwood, Pittsburgh area. If you make it more difficult...
You actually don't. What's actually been proven is that with the improvements to Highway 4, it is measurably quicker, even in rush hour, to go Highway 4 versus going railroad, Kirkers Pass, and Ignatio.
Yeah, you want to push people to Highway 4, right?
Yeah, well, it...
Away from Ignatio.
But the people who actually use Ignatio are destined for a location within Central County. That's, I mean, we've looked at origin destination studies, and the folks who are actually going to places beyond Central County take the freeway, because it's much faster.
And once you fix that interchange then, too, then there'll be a little smoother transition at 680-24.
Well, most of them take 242. They take 4 to 242, but 4 to 680, once the interchange is fixed, will be a viable option for quite a few folks. And included in this plan is untying the northbound knot at 680-24, which requires an extra lane through the interchange.
4 to 680 is a test of your vehicle acceleration.
Yes, it is. Anyway, there are lots of challenges and lots of ideas on how to fix them, and we're working on it, and there isn't enough money in the world to fix them all, but we're trying to get to things that really will improve everyone's commute, if not make it a whole lot shorter, at least make it more predictable. And that was the number-one thing that people asked for when we did the polling and the focus groups. They just want to know how long it's going to take. And this traffic smoothing and use of technology should actually make it a little, not only a lot smoother, but a whole lot more predictable. That's the goal. And Clayton will get some extra money out of it, so.
Great. Perfect. Let me do open up a public comment. If anybody in the audience would like to comment, please come up. Seeing none, we'll close public comment. So thank you very much. Item 11, are there any other, any matters that the council would like to bring for future meetings? And we did talk about earlier already, at some point, looking at the chicken loss in our city, and then from earlier as well, I know staff is still looking at the Oak Grove gate, so maybe there's a report or some information once...
I actually have one other issue that we need to put on the ballot for our next meeting, and that is to schedule an interview for an interim city manager. And we do have one interested party already, and we need to schedule that interview so we can make that appointment.
Is that a, how does that work? Is that a public interview, or is that a, is that a full council interview?
No, that's a closed session.
Closed session, full council?
Yeah. I would suggest probably 6 o'clock before the meeting. It needs to be at the next meeting, so since we're not, since we're not doing the first meeting, it needs to be before Gary's officially gone.
Absolutely. I just want to make sure we have consensus on the time, so we can, when we put the agenda together, we're all on the same page. So suggestion was 6:00 P.M.?
That's to July...
Right.
So 6:00 P.M., is that good for everybody? Hold on, let me look to July 16.
Hopefully, we're all here. If not, we, can we schedule that for a non-meeting night? I'm asking Mala if we need to.
You can definitely schedule the closed session interview for a special meeting, which is a non-meeting night.
The appointment has to be at the regular...
The appointment has to be at the regular meeting, so I think...
So it has to be before July 16, then?
Good at 6:00.
So you may want to interview, if you would like to have the person appointed by July 16, otherwise you're...
So...
Well, they could be appointed with an effective date, because we'd have an agreement.
Right.
So that agreement needs to be approved at a regular meeting, public meeting, so that I think is what you want to be done on July 16, I presume, so there's no gap with an effective date.
Right.
So can we have the closed session on July 16, and then appoint that person in the same meeting?
Well, you won't have...
Effective the end of July. You won't have a contract, so I think what we're recommending is to back the interview date up so that there's time to negotiate a contract, have us prepare it, and put it on the July 16 agenda.
Okay. How much more time do you need before the July 16 hearing?
No, I know, but I think in terms of negotiating an agreement, and, you know, we could have a template prepared, but I'm thinking it may be prudent...
Well, the amount is capped by purse, so can't be any more than what Gary's making right now, so that's kind of...
I mean, maybe I would suggest at least five days.
But it doesn't include benefits.
I know.
So at least five days would take us, like, the Thursday, Friday of the prior week?
Well, you're not counting weekend days, right?
No.
No, I'm not.
So do we need to reinstate July 2nd?
Do we want to do, do we want to do it on the, on the second Tuesday?
The 9th?
The 9th.
I mean, that's a Planning Commission night.
But you don't have to meet in here.
No, we can meet at City Hall.
Right.
So is everybody okay with July 9? Then are we talking about 6:00 P.M.?
If that works.
I'm fine with it.
Jim, are you okay?
Jim? Are you okay?
Yes, I'm not objecting.
Well, you didn't nod either, so we didn't know.
Yes, I did.
All right.
Okay, so then let's set...
July 9 at 6:00 P.M. for the interview?
Yeah, closed session for that.
City Hall?
Okay. Anything else?
So, did, so we are taking as an actual item to look at the chicken ordinance?
Yeah, I mean, I don't think it's going to come back immediately, but at some point, once we have staff timing.
Pending staff time.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I did, I, you know, my son had MSNAP for second grade, so she actually, I talked to her, and she did mention her interest, and so I did a little looking, and there is like a lot of stuff out there, so.
No, and this has come up with the other council before, so, and way before I was involved as well, so I think, I think the topic surfaces here and there, so, but it's, yeah, we'll bring it back when we can, so. Okay. With that, we are then adjourned to our, well, our next regularly scheduled meeting is July 16, but our next meeting will be the closed session on July 9. Great. That is it.